All right, the time is 5:00 PM. I'm calling to order a work session of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. And council, just to give you a little bit more information about the way that we're going to try this out, it was an idea that Sylvia and I discussed, that Sylvia had tried at, I think, at other public entities she's been at. Prior to having a formal meeting, is devoting some time to a work session, and we discussed this a little bit at the retreat. So we thought we'd try this time as having a little bit more of an informal, you know, sessions where we can talk about topics that are listed on the agenda. These are the two that I came up with for this work session, but future work sessions could include, you know, additional items. This is not intended to be, you know, where we're not going to be taking actions, we're not making motions, but it's a chance for us to interact with ourselves and staff on follow-up questions. We also have the item number four, which is really as a result of our discussion on item number three, there may be specific things that we want to bring forward to for future agendas, and that would be a directive, you know, to have staff go and develop that. And we want to make sure that it's not everybody just sort of, you know, doing that, it's gathered and we're all inconsistent that this is what we want to move forward on as far as the next steps in our process, or there's at least, you know, imperative to do so. Between this meeting and the next, we'll have a break, so we'll give ourselves some time to reset. We're going to continue to stream one session, so folks that are watching from the community will be able to, you know, continue on the same stream, but give us ourselves a chance to prepare for the regular meetings. So they'll try to stop us 10 minutes ahead of the hour, so we have that, that chance to take a break and stretch and get ready. So with that, we do also have a, with all our open meetings, we have a chance for citizen public communication, but since it's a work session, we're not going to be giving public communication during the actual work session, so it's going to be, again, for council and staff to work together. But at this time, we'll allow members of the public who wish to speak ahead of our work session to do so. And Melissa?
Am I live? I'm live. Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. Happy, happy afternoon and wonderful spring. So I have four topics that I'd like to bring up to you, things that mostly I'd like to support. I didn't see any backup, so I'm just kind of, I heard CIP was on here, and so I wanted to talk about that. So I would like to support approval of inflationary adjusted mayoral and department head discretionary spending. We talked about this previous in another meeting, and I think we need to move forward on that. Two, these are four items, two, I'd like to reinstate Public Works and the Police Department emergency funding. There were some categories that got cut, so that they would have money for when things, when they needed it, and so it's not significant funds. I think it was like $5,000, I want to talk to the chief, and if Public Works doesn't have this, I think they should, but I think that at one point they did have it. Three, transparent CIP and contractor backup. And what I mean by that is the whole amount of various, really the three categories of contractor and vendor spending can be found in one place. There's a correct category allotment with the budgetary limits in one place, and the third point is they're in an easy-to-understand format where people aren't confused. And so I think these are kind of no-brainer things, but I just want to have them in like one place. And then the fourth thing that I'd like to support is proper mayoral and council approval before dispersment of funds. And I think if we do these things, we're not going to run into the problems that we've had. So it's just listening to people and my reflecting back what I've heard, that if we were to do these things, we'd have relatively smooth sailing. I have a whole bunch of questions for a future timeline, I don't have three minutes, about the CIP process in general, but I'm going to save that for another time. Thank you all for your time, good luck.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? Either members of the public that I don't see, or any members of council that wish to stand in for members of the public? It's always funny, we have that occasionally, like when a member of council wants to take off their council hat and go and speak, but I think it's a useful tool. With that, we're going to move into item number three, which is council will discuss the following items, but take no action. So we're going to, we have on the agenda, the budget amendment process and related financial policies. We did have a meeting in early March to begin the kind of discussion about our financial process and also any related financial policies, where we captured some initial notes, and we started to come up with some ideas and talk about countermeasures that have already been put in place, when this is a follow-on to that discussion to allow us to further investigation, discussion, and then any follow-up actions that we wish to take. The other is the council retreat follow-up, and I'll just kind of characterize this by a couple of two things. One is, we had, I think, I welcome the opportunity to work at the retreat, but we didn't finish, right? So I think that's all acknowledgement that there's more work to be done. However, there are going to be some things that we probably do not want to wait on initiating, some of the objectives that we had identified in the high priority items especially. And this is an opportunity for us to discuss as a council, maybe taking some action on starting, working towards those goals that we outlined, before we meet again to conclude our retreat, which we're looking for a date later in April at this point to have a follow-on to retreat. But I don't necessarily want to wait until that meeting before we finalize our objectives and then initiate some of the actions, because I think some of this are time-critical as far as our budget process or our just objectives as council in the city. And so this can be an opportunity for us to discuss those and maybe initiate some of those actions before we have the follow-up retreat. And with that, you know, I'll open it up for the council discussion. I think the things that I would like to do is continue working on especially the process that we have for our approvals and, and really identifying, you know, in a visual language, I think, you know, because we've got to start on that, what that process looks like, at what point council, mayor, department heads, city administrator, you know, gets interjected and how that lines up with our budgets, and also discuss some of the changes, I think that would be smart for us to make to our financial policies with regards to some thresholds, and maybe even some language that would allow a little bit more flexibility, as well as having in this budget, emergency funds available for departments to access when we, when the needs arise. So with that, I'll, and I'll let staff also, at this point, talk about anything specifically, Sylvia, if you wanted to speak to next steps that you see for some of the budget adjustments and financial policies that we've been working on as well, and then gives council a chance to discuss as well.
Well, internally, it's better tracking and management and trying to better incorporate the existing MIP system, I'm sorry, I can't see all of you, incorporate the MIP system before we decide to dump that program altogether. So we did meet with OpenGov, they will be here again, we have a follow-up meeting with Ward on that, and Lori has moved forward in learning POs and encumbrances, which are two different things, right? We encumber the money we think we're going to spend before we issue a purchase order that actually moves the money. And then the bi-weekly report that Lori's been creating is a budget report on where we are, and you guys got a glimpse of that. Taking that a step further, and you'll see that in some of Susannah's documentation at your next meeting, is she's actually pointing out, okay, these are the things administration needs to worry about, these are the things, and as we're catching it on a bi-weekly basis, it's before it gets to you, it's those mayoral adjustments or administrator adjustments. There are some things embedded inherent in the way we budget that need to be fixed. And so, for example, one of the simple ones is insurance. Insurance is budgeted on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year, so we're always having to make that adjustment. She made us, she made a call to the insurance folks, they're going to change it to fiscal, so that we're in line. And there's just a lot of little, little, little things like that, but they require constant tracking and constant moving of funds. And then we did create a draft CIP tracking, and that's in OpenGov as well, it's a dashboard where you'll be able to see all of the projects. And I believe I sent that out to some of you. It was actually a request to council member Carmona, so we created it pretty quickly and launched it. But we did talk about adding some programming to OpenGov, because you guys want to see a level higher, the bank accounts, right, what the fund balances are. You want to see the, the fund, the department, the organization, and then you want to actually see the project. So we need two additional layers of programming to be able to get a complete picture that I think you guys are looking for. And then we've launched into repair and replacement, which is they're taking a complete inventory, and we are revamping that sheet completely. And we've got to change the way we budget for that as well, because we don't historically budget for it, right? It's a revenue that we transfer in, but there's no expense until that expense is going to be brought before you. We need to do a better job about showing that in the budget, so everybody expects those things to come this year, and when they don't come, you say, hey, I thought we were buying a backhoe, or hey, I thought we were buying a kaboodle, or hey, I thought we were doing a roof replacement. Where is that, and why aren't we doing that? I think that touches your maintenance need, and it touches the fact that we should be doing these things. So that's what we're doing internally, to make sure that we are, we heard you, we are making internal improvements to make sure that what we heard is what you want, and we'll be bringing all of those forward as you get your budget reports every month.
So council, open discussion, it's if you want to jump in and start asking follow-up questions, or things that you want to see specifically that we can explore during this time, or to bring back as a future meeting, now's the time to bring those up. Mayor President?
I think that Sylvia, you mentioned that now Lori, she was moving to encumber some purchases, and they would start with the purchase orders. And I think that in my suggestion is that they will follow the flow chart that you showed us, or how, because I was thinking that we need to set some standards, and in that way, if you set some procedures, that procedure will be standard, and everybody has to follow that procedure. So if we have one person, that doesn't mean that that changed the procedure. So we need to standardize that, this is my suggestion. With the bi-weekly reports, I think that the only report that they showed was the quarterly report last time, and that quarterly report used to be the liaison from the finance department, historical. So I don't know if now that changed, and has to be coming from the staff. The staff used to prepare that, used to go to the committee, and with the liaison, working with them, the liaison, she or he used to present that in city council. So, and I think that that is different than, than I saw. I saw a simple quarterly report, and when I was reading more and more the budgets, not only from us, they refer to a monthly report, and we don't have a monthly report. Not necessarily, we will have some accuracy that needs to be in rocks, but we need to have some idea how much is the revenues and the expenditures, and it's in all, in all budgets from different cities than I saw, they refer to that. And that thing about the calendar or fiscal year expenditures, it's a good deal, it's a good deal, but I don't know if it's only for, for the insurance, or you have that for other kind of things. But I think that in that, when you are doing the budget, my suggestion is you need to have a cushion in all of that areas, and that cushion maybe will be 25%. So in that way, we don't need to start with budget adjustments, and we are ahead. And we, we don't need to be, well, it's almost, no, we are, we budget these areas because not necessarily they are regular, so they change, and because they change, we start with 25% above, for say that. Obviously, that that requires constant, the budget is every day, and I think that in this case, the heads of departments, they are very responsible. So the heads of departments, this is the people that is moving the money, this is the people that is, needs to be checking that, and they have to have more accountability with this. That doesn't mean that the city administrator is the head, but the two heads of departments, this is that they will request the budget, this is that they need to be watching how they are, they are spending that. Now with the tracking of the CIP, I think that we need to work more with that, and perhaps that would be part of one agenda of the city council, in the way how we are working with that, because that will have some, no complications, but a lot of talking, because each project now used to be in one phase, but now in that project, if you have the project, the project engineer, and later you have the people working, it's staff, and the staff needs to be checking constructions, checking bids, checking that, we need to be very careful if in reality, we can accomplish that. That is a critical part, because if you're looking, CIP, maybe 11 projects, is there now on the screen, and if that 11 projects is one point, in that place is $1.4 million. So from that, from that 11 projects, the engineers, they have one part, but now they pass the other part, because we don't have a project manager, to the city. So the city is that will have the big load, because engineer is an engineer, a project manager is looking all the project. So when they will start with bids, and this is something that we need to discuss, because if we have $25,000 as a, as a budget, or we would say, if they need to do POs, 25,000, I mean, 150,000, that in that 11 or 12, most of them, they will be above the 25. So how many city councils we will have for approval, and first, request for proposal, request for bids, and later approvals. So this is a macro activity, then at this moment, I think that they need to be watching that, because the engineers say, this is my part, design, boom. Now, for example, the other day, council member Johnson, he asked me about the lift station. Well, the lift stations, they made the design, now is the second phase, the design, the permit, and now the second phase is who will be doing the construction. And in that, we have to send that for bids. Who will prepare the bids? Has to be the staff, because we are, we are taking that responsibility. And that, when we will have the bids, first, we need to approve that, and after that, we will send that for construction, and in that construction, the, all the invoices and et cetera, who will be taking care of that? So that will be the relation between the, the staff and the contractor that is doing the construction, for say that part. So all of that labor is staff, and we don't have a lot of staff, and most of that will be the director, and now the director with the superintendent, the superintendent is new, but we will see how that works. So looking at that, I think that we need to analyze much better the CIP, is my advisor, because at the beginning, we start with the engineers, they will be also the project manager, and after that, almost they move out, and now it's not the project manager, it's, it's the city, it's the staff, the project manager, and that is a, is a big, big responsibility. If you remember with these, these facilities, was a big, big problem, the, the, the project manager. Now, with repair and replacement, I think that, in the way that they used to do that, is true. They used to have, they used to take that for a general fund, and they say, well, we will allocate 130,000, and they purchased that. It wasn't in reality, properly as supposed to be, bet last year, last year, because I saw the papers from the police, the quotes, they were specific. They said, we want this for 22, pa, 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 and the list. So I didn't see that for, yet for public works, but if we believe that police require the patrols, and the police requires the radios, because they requested that, for some way, it wasn't there, okay, but I saw the list, and this is that I tried to show you the other day at the end of the meeting. Fortunately, it was 10 o'clock, but now with more time, the chief, now, he's, he saw his list, and he said, no, no, we are waiting for the, for the vehicles. Well, according with the budget, not necessary is there. Yeah, but that was the request? Yes, but nothing is impossible, we need to work with that, and now we have a better communication. When we were working with the budget, believe me, it was an excellent job, this was excellent, and it's, nobody was wrong. We omit just a little, then we didn't put that. So this is how I say that, and when they say internal, I appreciate Sylvia, that you were doing all of this with the staff, because this is in reality than we want, so thank you for that.
If I could just clear up one thing. So we promised the council monthly reports to track engineering, attorney, and IT expenses. That's what we promised, a monthly report to the council. The quarterly report will still go to budget and finance through the liaison before that comes to the council. What you saw the last time was a quarterly report that went to budget and finance and then came this way. What I'm talking about is what we're doing internally on a bi-weekly basis with the staff, to make sure that, one, things don't go over, and then if we have something that looks like it's going to go over, that we get ahead of it, so that we're asking before we've spent it. Still trying to figure out how to wrap my head around the credit cards, but that's, that's a separate sidebar conversation, because they're journal entries, and those are maddening sometimes. So I just wanted to clear that up on the budget, on the budget report.
Just, because I think I heard engineering, IT, and what was the other one, the attorney? And so we'll see the first of those on our next council meeting? Okay. What's that buzzing noise?
And it's the, it's the first council, it's the first council meeting of the month, because budget will see it at the, the last of the prior month, so that's, that's how that will go.
Reidy, did you have your hand raised? No, my apologies. Wanda, that's...
Thank you, I'm here. A couple of thoughts. One, the credit cards, do we have a limit on the credit card spending? Do cards have a limit?
Credit cards have a limit, yes.
Okay, that's one good control that you have already, and that's a very reasonable limit.
Mm-hmm, there, yes. We've raised, like, chief has a raised limit, and Carolyn has a raised limit.
Because he's got emergencies, right, right. But then there's only so much you can spend, so it's not like you're going to spend all our coffers of everything, so the credit card system is totally, is not totally out of control.
No, no, it's not, it's not an Amex, it doesn't have a no, what I'm talking about is we, they make purchases throughout the month, and then the month, the receipt comes in and we code it.
Yep, 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 okay, and you only have a few out.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the other thought that I just want to bring up is, is kind of our role as council. I think our role is more of the big picture, and of the overall policies and such, versus, you know, I don't need to see every PO, I don't need to do all that, I just, we don't have the bandwidth to do all that, but what we want to make sure is that we have good policies in place, and that we're comfortable that policies are being followed. Now, we did find that one policy in our financial policies was not being followed, that is now corrected, various things, it's, it feels like y'all have to go through lots and lots of hoops to do that, which makes me wonder if that policy needs to be revisited, there didn't seem to be much of an appetite before, I don't know if that's changed or not, so I'll just leave that open. I would like to look at that again, if there's any appetite for that. And then, and then two, I would prefer this council deal with big pictures, big expenditures, big processes, versus your $20 over that line item. So let's, if we can move in that direction, I think we'd accomplish so much more, so that's where I'm at.
So this is just work, we can just go anywhere, all right. So the, I'm looking at the SIP, what do we call this?
CIP expression tracker.
The SIP, yeah, the SIP tracker here. When, when we voted, yeah, I was on council, when we voted to spend this money, did we think, did we think 194 grand was going to do it? You know, this isn't like, I'm not going to nail you on this.
194 grand for which?
For, sorry, for the lift station, my apologies, I thought I said that.
Oh, so the lift station was a continuation of prior year's project, so we thought 194 for this fiscal year.
Okay, and the, I'm just looking over at the Freeland Turk, like, what they have left in the, for like, the engineering budget, right? And they have 1548 left?
And that sounds about right, because they should be done engineering, we're now reaching the bid phase. I think they've given, I think you should expect that on the council agenda in April, correct, Carolyn?
So regarding the lift station, council approved an amendment to the lift station engineering at the last council meeting in, at March 8th, so that we can continue with the bidding and construction phase, so that's, that's actually what is left on there now, needs to be updated to be what was approved by council at the last meeting. So there is money left in there for the bidding and construction phase.
We voted on a lot of stuff, how much did we, how much did we approve?
It was a $15,000 amendment to the, to the engineering budget.
And they felt good, like, that was their, like, best guess, right?
So when, that was when the, the last item was, because we had to do a full sewer collection system, that wasn't really anticipated at first, but that was that item where TCQ us, nobody could find the original documents, so the engineers had to recreate those original documents for the whole lift station. So it was an extra expense that was not anticipated, so they used some of the, they didn't go over budget, but they knew once we got to bidding and construction, that we were going to need more money to get, get us through the end of the project. So, yeah.
Okay.
And to answer that question, you know, kind of to go a little further, so we did our, you know, they do their best estimate on that project, we will not know the full cost of the lift station project until we receive those bids and get that. At that point, then council will be awarding those bids, and we'll be doing a contract for that amount, and so we would need to, if it's going to be over, giving supply chain and all the other issues, probably will be more expensive than we originally anticipated, at that time, we would do a budget adjustment for that project, and amend the budget, once we have actual solid numbers for our project.
Is there, and you can just say, like, you can just, like, send me a link or whatever, but is there, like, when Freeland says, we're going to spend this much, and this is what you're going to get out of it, I, you know, I'm, I'm constantly trying to, SIP and finance are my weak, my weak points, like, I just, I kind of follow along, and it's like, you know, if Alfonso seems happy, then I, like, okay, I'm happy then, but, you know, I, what we're paying, like, what we're buying essentially from, like, Freeland or, like, whatever the firm that actually does, like, the work.
Right.
I'm always just, you know, honestly, I probably understand what, you know, when we take the, the remaining of this budget and just say, like, here, actually fix it, like, I understand that more than I understand, like, what Freeland is doing. So is there somewhere where you could just say, Rob, look here?
Look at, I would say, all the project task orders are attached to each webpage for the project, and so the task orders are going to tell you what the engineering should be doing, and what our final project, final product is.
Is that the thing I said to remove from the, from the packet last time?
I don't think so.
I was like, is this useful?
No, 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 I don't think so, it was something else, yeah, so I think this is, no, that was something totally different.
Okay, cool.
So no, the task orders are on the webpages, and that tells you what you should be, what it is in engineering, so some of it's towards surveying, some of it's toward, you know, this and that, some of it's for bidding, some of it's for construction, so that's where that, those numbers really are, on what you should get. So any engineering product, at the end, we should have final engineering plans, and at the very end, we should have a project that has been constructed and approved, and the engineer says, yes, we are done, I'm signing off. and the engineer says, yes, we are done, I'm signing off, and I accept this project as being completed to the standards that it needs to be completed to. And then we obviously bring that to council and say, the engineer has said, this is a good project, it meets all standards, and then council has final acceptance of the project, so.
So they don't have, like, again, like, we already said, but it's not like they only had $1,500 to close out this project, it's more like?
They have, like, six, $16,000 probably to close out the project.
Right, i- in terms of past years, like, what's our workload this year? Is, I, well, let, let's take out the two previous COVID years, and, well, you know, let's just say, like, those were light, we kind of, like, pushed some things to the back burner, but like, how is our workload this year compared to pre-COVID years?
I, I would say it's on par, um, in some ways, and.
I think you had a lot of planned projects.
Yes.
Um, and then a lot of projects that never got to execution for one reason or the other. So what's different this year is that we listed them, and we said, all of these projects will be in some form of engineering or bid, and that we could guarantee. This list of projects, which, uh, I'm gonna pull over the, the final adopted budget. If you go into the final adopted budget, if I can see my cursor, um, the final adopted budget has the, um, the CIP in it. Um, and that was the preliminary discussion of, this is what we think we're going to be able to get with, um, with those funds. This is the project scope, uh, and that was what was spent early on to scope out some of those, um, those projects. I took it a, a step further and gave you guys, uh, a pro forma, an impacted fund pro forma, because I wanted you to see what was gonna happen to the water, the wastewater funds, if all of those projects were, um, were accepted. So here's the, um, it's in the, it's in the back of the budget document, as I think it's appendix one. So, and it's broken down by, um, by system, and so they give you the project, and they give you what the, um, can you guys see that? Probably not. Uh, the project scope, the engineering, any acquisition that needs to happen, construction, and that's where we came up with those original numbers that became the set.
And, and I, if I remember, there was a lot of stuff in this that was also just, like, looking into the future, right?
Yes, and so there was a discussion about what's gonna be in our next year's CIP. So, um, Carolyn, the engineers, as we worked through the table, we said, okay, these are the ones for this year, looking forward. We believe these are gonna be the next tranche and the next tranche, and mostly they piggyback on one another, but sometimes they're, you know, brand new in that, in that particular year. But, um, more than anything, what we're doing different this year is, here's what we're committing to, and here's our deliverable for that commitment, um, as opposed to putting it out there and hoping for the best.
You know, when I, when I look at this, I don't think it's, it's just like engineering task order budget, just like that column, and I think to myself, like, Freeland Turk has a lot of, a lot of different disciplines at their office, and in, uh, um, not Gary, what's?
Tom?
Tom, yeah, Tom explained to me, like, he kind of broke down what the different disciplines were, and kind of like that, that mix rate there. And I constantly think, you know, if I look at this and just say, should we just hire an engineer? But it's like, if this is like a particularly heavy year, and maybe this isn't one person, that, I mean, I can't see how this would be one person, but it's like, i- it's just like a constant calculation as we go, it's just like, would it make more sense to have, like, an employee that does this based, or versus a, you know, just farming it out, and being a freelance, you know, being a hired kind of, like, tool? Like, I understand the value of that, where it's just like, you turn me on, I do some work, you turn me off, I'm not charging anything, so.
And, and I was talking with, uh, Dakota, our new public works superintendent today, and that, and that, we talked about that a little bit. And it, let's take the lift station project, for example. So say if the city had its own civil engineer, you are still gonna need a mechanical and electric engineer to fill in some parts of it. You're not gonna be able to have one person who is every discipline. Um, so it, it takes multiple people, and so when you have a group, huh? Yeah, and the surveyors, and every, so it's gonna take a team of people to do engineering projects, it's not just generally one person. So we see Tom and Gary the most part, but then there, you, we have to have, like I said, electrical, mechanical, you know, structural. It takes different people to do different parts of the project, and the city, I mean, I don't think the city wants to invest in a team of engineers on staff all the time. Um, I think that gets very expensive.
Yeah, for sure, thank you.
Rudy, I saw your hand raised, and then I wanna comment on the CIP.
Okay, when I was, uh, jotting down some CIP projects, I went to the budget for 2021, 2022, and I had eight, 184 for Sterns Lane Lift Station, one, not 194, so there's 10,000 somewhere?
Yeah, so what that was, is, and I, and I think I talked to Susannah about this, part of that was an encumbrance from last year, and so some of the money was spent, so I think this year there was $112,000 that was budgeted in FY 21, '22, and then there was, like, the remainder of it was from FY 20, '21, which is $68,000. So originally it was anticipated, oh, it, it was written down as being $82,000, but there were, there was money that was actually spent on the project in FY 21. So that's where the difference comes in between those. So that's why it's 180, you'll see it on there, it's 180 something or another, I can't remember, I don't have those numbers up. Yeah, yeah, so, um, that's where you're coming up with that difference right there, is because money, we, we can only encumber funds that were not spent last year. So that's where the difference is.
Did you, Rudy, did you have more on that one?
I'm still in a haze, because I'm, 184 is what the budget was, has nothing to do with what was spent, that was the budget, 184, for 2021, 2022. So if it was 194, and we're now talking 184, I understand, some money has already been spent in the budget, but the budget's at 184.
Remember to say 184?
I can't show you now, uh, and this tiny little screen doesn't help me, but I went back to the budget and I looked at it, the budget that was on the homepage of our sunsetvalley.org, and I went to the CIP projects.
Does it write it? That's what's on our, that's what's on our, um, home screen.
Can you blow that up?
Sure.
Hit lift station.
Is that better?
The Quito. I see the 112, I see the 82, I do not see the 184, and I do not see the.
So, um, we had a budget for the lift station already in FY 21, this column is FY 20, '21, that's what this column is. There's $82,000 that was in there.
So it says what, if you add those two together, it's 194.
194. And you're, you're saying what number?
I'm saying 184, when I looked at the budget, it's at 184.
Yes, this, this is 194. Not sure if there's an error, but I'm happy to talk to you after this to find that 194.
So one thing I wanted to comment on is, you're, I think, Rob, you were asking about comparison to previous years. The way that I recall, we ha- we handled projects was, in the budget, we always had project workbooks, or project worksheets, I guess, there were, like, project books, right?
Yep.
And so similar to the CIP, where there'd be a summary of each project that the city was going to, um, run that year, or propose that year, and those were generally, usually generated by the departments, and kind of from a department going through their budgetary process, and then getting to the council for approval. So each had a budget workbook or a project workbook, um, that basically summarized a project, you know, the total cost, and then we would authorize them with a budget, and then we would essentially have staff go and execute those projects. Not all of them included engineers, um, you know, just like our CIP this year, doesn't include all, not, there's not a task order for engineering for all our CIPs, right? Um, for example, like, the GIS survey, the open space planning, the, um, public safety, you know, or the, the, the safety improvements to our city facilities, none of those came from the engineering CIPs, but they are CIP projects that, you know, have a cost associated with them, so they're similar to, you know, a project workbook in the, in the past sense. I recall, in general, you know, we, we were fairly good as a city about executing projects, but many times they would be, you know, partially executed and deferred to the next year, you know, they were kind of this rolling, you know, that, so, similar to what we've done with CIPs, and in terms of, we either need to do a good job monitoring them, and make sure that we're getting status, and that we're moved forward, you know, in terms of project management, um, or they're gonna lose track or get reprioritized, because council comes up with new priorities that supersede, you know, some of those projects. Um, having in a CIP list like this is, uh, you know, continues to evolve our organization, because having them in those budget workbooks and those project workbooks, they can get a little bit loose in terms of, like, their organization and management, and, you know, that's why the CIP is, is a good move for us. I think where, what Alfonso's point, you know, is, each CIP project should have a, somebody who is like the staff project manager listed, right? And that's to be, and we should make sure that that's the person who is in charge of the overall project, and make sure that they're giving them, they're giving status reports that are feeding into council, and if that needs to be a monthly basis or a quarterly basis where we, we get, you know, those status reports. But basically, you know, I'd expect each one of these projects, you know, most of them are gonna fall under public works, because that's typically what CIP projects are, some of these are gonna be public safety, some of these are gonna be administration, and, you know, the, these things need to be, and I think having, like, a dedicated person, um, is, listed on each of these is a good, good, uh, way of doing that. Um, but just to give you the historical context, that's, we used to have, we didn't call them CIPs, but we called them, you know, projects, and they were, project, each one had a workbook that had details about it. Uh, we didn't have a good follow-up mechanism, I don't remember, in terms of council.
Me too.
Uh, Alfonso, you had your hand raised, yes?
Can we see the lift station, please? So in that way, we will close that, and, and I think will be much better for Rob. No, no, in the, in that area, you will go down, please, where we have the wastewater. So keep going. Wastewater. So we will see, there are two projects, that is the lift station. So for example, in the way, eh, it, it's no bad idea in the way that they try to do a CIP. When you are looking, you say, what do they need, the city? Water, wastewater, parks, drainage, streets, what, what do they need? So they are doing an inventory of needs, and you, you invite the people, invite everybody, stakeholders, so it's the most important. In that, if they want to have new facilities, if they want to have a swimming pool, all of that is coming. They will be a capital improvements. So it's a lot of money that you will invest, so you make a big, big list, and you say, well, we cannot purchase this in one year. We will try to have this in five years. So you make blocks, and you feed that for five years. And then you say, well, now all of these pertain to utilities, do I have money in utilities to pay for that? Or I need to go for bonds or for something? Uh, do I have money for the streets? So you are looking in your reserves, if you have the money. So at this moment, this year, they presented this as a priority projects. Public Works, the committee, they vote, and they say, this is the first, this is what we wanted, and everybody, we agree. So we approve this. When we approve this, we hire a company, then that, that company, Free, Freeland, this is the engineers, that they were doing all of that, eh, planning. Now, they proposed, and they presented to us with nice pictures, and with the objective, and with some areas. So one of the most important areas that now I am looking, and this is why I try to tell a lot of our staff, is the, the next page, please. So here, you will see there, they say, project cost. So you have engineering, so engineering, it say, eh, I, I think it say $40,000. And it say, the next, what it say right away, or what it say? And the le- next? Construction, and the last is conting- contingency, how much money? 25, well, they didn't put too much in contingency. As an engineer, for me, that is a number. The 184, then Rudy, she mentioned.
There it is, 184.
Okay, okay, so sometimes engineering, in, in general projects, takes 12%, 12 to 15% of the project, the total project. If this project was 200,000, so you say, 200 will be 15%, so will be 30,000. They say, no, will be 40, because it has some problems, and it's more. This is, this is one prediction, but when they start working, so at that time, they presented this. When they start working, they found that, no, we don't have this data, no, we don't have this that, no, now we need to do this extra. Oh, no, now we need to work more with TCQ. So instead of 44, now we are close to 60 or 70, no? Because we approved the last $15,000 for engineering, but now, what, who will be doing the others? So for example, at this moment, the right away, we have zero, it's a little risky. We have, eh, in construction, at this moment, our head of department, with the new guy, they need to start working with the bids, and they need to start working with the papers, and they will bring to us that papers. And we need to approve or disapprove, and after that, perhaps that money is not enough, and will be extra money. So my point is, at this moment, if you have 11 or 12 of these projects, now look the, the macro, eh, problem that you have, because at this moment, all of, all the engineers that we have is in the design and in the paper, nothing is in the field. Eh, this is part of the, the project, so at this moment, all of them, they will start with construction, but now the ball is coming to us, and this is mainly that I try to say. Now, it's easy to say, I can do it, okay, sure, and we need to work together. I will be optimistic, but I have to be some realistic, because I was walking with that. So now for you faster, Rob, did you see now that? It's a little more clear for you? So at this moment, 184, I think that we are now in 200 something, but perhaps we'll go to, close to 300. But that, that is part of the job, but was the same with the, the line that we have, the other line.
How many houses, sorry, how many houses and how many properties are serviced by this lift station?
So it would be ever, all the businesses along Highway 290, and then the, it's a very small residential side, it's only a few houses on Sterns, but it's all the, the businesses on Highway 290.
Five houses.
Justin, and then Wanda?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, I guess to reiterate that, where I look at the, the issues there, it's like, the, the idea to initiate, like, I love that we wanted to do all these projects, but the initiative, like, the idea of initiating all of them at the same time, and having them all go through in lockstep, seems like maybe a curious decision, and I didn't catch on it or whatever. Um, but maybe in the future, we wanna stagger them, and hopefully we will, because I think that there will be lessons learned, project to project, like, as we learn to fine-tune our engineers' estimates and whatever, and how to ingest them as a city, and we can make that more smoothly. You know, continuous versus batch processes tend to be, uh, a little bit, allow for more learning. Um, the other thing is that, that also falls into, like, the engineer thing, what kind of Rob was asking about there, where we obviously don't want to hire an entire engineering team, but you can think about a lot of organizations, even fairly small ones, will have in-house counsel, legal counsel, or something, because having your in-house counsel to manage your external lawyers that are your trial lawyers, your whatever lawyers, helps, gives you some checks and balances. So I would be supportive of that, largely just so that we can manage our engineers better, not that we would do it strictly to avoid contracting out any engineering, right? Like, you always want some in-house team, even if you've got a bunch of outsourced engineers. Um, and then the third thing, um, And then the third thing, Sylvia, if this, this monthly report with the engineering, IT and legal budget, is there a way you could get that to, like at least the form of that to us before the next meeting? Is that a possible thing?
Sure, I'm gonna-
It's been kind of like in, like it's been promised for a long time and I just want to make sure that it's not a surprise when we see it. So even just the form of it would be awesome.
I'm gonna, I was already in the process of creating an open gov digital-
Awesome, thank you.
Where you guys can just go see it yourself.
Perfect.
Wanda?
I was just going to suggest that perhaps we have one of these work sessions on staffing. I think we were going to talk about that in the retreat, we never quite got to that. And this, you know, we're talking about engineering support, it would, you know, we haven't heard from you Carolyn, whether or not you need an engineer on staff or what you need or from the project management standpoint, since most will fall to you. And so, so I think that's a whole discussion. So I think we ought to put that as one of our items.
Rob?
Yeah, in our, in our joint kind of meeting, the, the members of Public Works said that, you know, there's some civil engineers that are like living, but they're, they're maybe not, maybe not the youngest bunch of people. So it's like, how long are they really going to want to, you know, donate, I know, how long are they going to want to donate their time? They're still super helpful, but I think a lot of the younger people are all involved in like, that we can give our perspective on like computer stuff, but not civil engineering. If, I, I wanted to, to mention one thing that's more on the budget side. Wanda had mentioned something like a month ago and then just looking at what Chief and Carolyn do with, with kind of, like I said, and admin also, with some of these weather events. So what Wanda had said was kind of just working out the idea about like if one shopping center kind of goes down for construction or whatever, it was kind of like a tabletop exercise for budgetary reasons. Do, have you heard of that at other cities? Would that be helpful? I, I feel like maybe larger cities are more robust, that if one goes down, it doesn't really matter, but for us it is, we could get, you know?
Very much so. That was a question I had for the Budget and Finance Committee, because they're doing one and two percent, one, two and three percent. And I went, well, what is that relative to what? That was what prompted the HDL report, because we could like get super granular data, private data that you guys can see of which entity is doing well, right? And so if we know that there's a downward trend for one of our top five, then we got to be planning our revenues and making adjustments like on the fly for those top five. So yes, absolutely, it's, we have the data, we have the information and we should be, our, our long-range forecast should include inflationary adjustments, but also should include those major scenarios.
So council, it's been a great discussion, but we are running close to our time for our regular council meeting, so I would like to wrap up and then give us a few minutes to transition into the six hour meeting. There are a couple of takeaways that I had and that I'd like to move forward with. One is, Wanda, the, the work session on staffing, I think is something we need to do before we meet again on the retreat, so that can be an opportunity for us at our next council meeting to have a more robust discussion. So I, I can, I think that would be useful for us in the context of engineering, in context of business, you know, management, development, staff, you know, staff assistance.
I, I couldn't hear, Mr. Mayor, can you repeat that?
Wanda's suggestion to have a, one of the work sessions that we have before council meeting focused on staffing, because I think that's a priority that is going to come up before we meet again for the conclusion of the retreat.
You mentioned work session?
Like this format, where we use this, this format, but, but the next, one of the next ones be devoted to discussing staffing needs as a part of our retreat follow-up.
Yes.
Sylvia, if you could, one of the things I'd like to bring back and provide to council is that purchase order approval workflow that I think you, you started developing before to distribute to council or maybe present at the next, and I'd like to present this at an upcoming meeting, either as an agenda item or as a work session, so we can just go through this in more detail. The other request that council member Litchfield had was a preview of the monthly report to make sure that we get that before the next meeting. We didn't really get to items on our retreat that we want to take action on, but I remember two of the objectives related to, that have a kind of more direct budget impact regarding the assessment of the Upper Cougar Creek for feasibility. So one of our goals was to determine the, you know, the feasibility of, of the site plan from a, I think an environmental, but also legal aspect was one of the goals. I would very much like to have staff get direction to work on that so that we begin that process rather than wait till our retreats. That, that's a priority, I think, that came out of our retreat discussions. In addition to the community center was another one, which is the feasibility of a community center. So I'd like, if there's concurrence from council, I'd like to direct staff to go ahead and start working on those items as priorities because they'll both impact our budget process this year. All right, is that good enough Sylvia, in terms of the direction?
So I have the budget report for professional services, I have Upper Cougar Creek feasibility study, the flow chart.
And then the, the community center feasibility as well. All right, council, any last minute things before we break and then resume? Alfonso?
Yeah, we are talking feasibility study, we have one for the Upper Cougar Creek. I, I think that maybe, that I was more concerned was that I would like to see one approval from Homestead, Madeline and Village, then we can do the things that we plan to do. After that, I would, I would say we have a green light and we can do a lot of things because at this moment, we did that we have and the attorney says something, our attorney. But I, I would like to see the approval from the owners, from Homestead, then they approve that, Madeline and Village, because we will be using parking lots and we will be using other kind of things that they pertain to them.
Yeah, I think, I think there's going to be, not necessarily getting approval until we have, we're further down the line, but I think we need to engage with them to talk about the proposed plan and talk about the impacts and what the, you know, the steps would be for them to, to, to basically, you know, be partners with us on this project.
Exactly, Mr. Mayor, yeah, this is Mr. Mayor.
So I think part of the feasibility is we want to look for is engagement with those, the shopping center and commercial areas that are surrounding Upper Cougar Creek and determine how we involve them and get their approvals or they're planning for their approvals where, where we need to. All right, council, let's go ahead and close out our work session. Thank you for this. It feels actually kind of nice to have these kind of like smaller bites of this, appreciate that. We're going to stop at 5:58 PM. We're going to come back here and let's give ourselves five minutes, we'll start up at
All right, the time is six oh five P M. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for March twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. And we'll start with public communications and citizen comments. And so anybody here to speak at this time, not too specific to any item, can step up to the mic.
Good evening, I'm Danny Horrigan. The mic were phoned, man, after all these years, that is awesome, some technology. Okay, I'm Danny Horrigan, and I'm glad to be here. There's a lot to talk about, and there's some, just let me get right to it. Our government is promoting biological males to swim against women and take the gold. This is a Westlake Hills resident, keeping Austin weird. Okay, so I can relate to Jesus Christ, and more importantly, I'll identify as Moses, a pig farmer, and a shepherd. So Alfonso, what do you have for me concerning, well, we talked about the theft of the no parking sign? Do you have anything for me? I was hoping we might have reached out and had a phone conversation, but we didn't, so I have to put you on the spot here tonight. Do you have anything for me concerning the theft of the no parking sign that was in front of one pillar road that has caused me years of PTSD and grief? Do you have anything for me, Alfonso? Concerning the no parking theft?
It's up to you if you want to respond, Alfonso.
This is citizen public communication, this isn't a discussion between the public and the council.
And if it hasn't been in discussion before council, could they please discuss it?
Not on the agenda for this evening.
Because if this is more than Alfonso can handle, it should be discussed amongst the council. I mean, if this is a true democracy.
Danny?
Yes, sir.
Danny, oh, Mr. Horrigan, I will check today with the chief, and after that, I will give it to you.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I have reported it to the Sunset Valley Administration, but I would like to ask a question to all of you. Which one of you would tell on your neighbor immediately if you saw somebody come into your neighborhood and just put something there that was obviously not supposed to be there against the land development code? What would you do? You start with Alfonso, move down, please.
No, we don't, it's not an interactive discussion.
Okay, well then, let's just go on. Well, we'll get to that. I've dealt with the administrative staff, I've talked to Chief Carter about all these issues, and I've been ignored and denied, I've been talking about these issues sixteen years, and some craziness going on over there on Three Pillar Road, and a lot of tension. Your attorney and the policeman over there is good. They have not talked to me, I've asked to speak to the city attorney. Lately, there's been a case of stolen valor, which is a felony, okay? That's changing gears a little bit, but pay attention, I'm ADHD, you can handle this. Someone came to my house, told me a whopping story about fighting with my brother in Iraq and Afghanistan. This person stole from me, okay? So all I needed to know from the police department was, I notified the Chief Carter, and there was nothing he could give to me, called the DPS, because this is internal state of Texas, this is not my problem. I called Travis County Sheriff's Office. All I had to do was have somebody tell me to call the FBI. Well, that was something I never really thought to do for myself, so I, well, it's just an FBI matter, so, okay. Now, I'm gonna change gears again. Mr. Young had talked about how the credit card was a deficit disorder or something going on here between the, somebody's taking the credit card home with them, it doesn't add up to the financial report. If that's going on in Sunset Valley, what else do you think is able or capable of, a systemic issue? I learned how to speak like this up here, man, you pushed me to this microphone, and you created me. I'm a preacher, I am Dan Horrigan, Danny Devine. I live at Three Pillar Road, and I'm gonna raise pigs till you tell me I can't. I'm gonna raise hogs, I'm gonna get me a, you know, I'm gonna paint a pop-up slide-out trailer on my bus. You know, I'm coming back right here, I'm gonna learn how to speak better. I went to Dallas, Texas, and when I got back, there was a sign ordinance that passed that I'd complained about.
Thank you, Danny, thank you, four minutes left.
God bless.
Thank you. If anybody else wishes to speak at the time, public citizen comments, please do so. All right? That was not a hand raised, there was a blinding light from the sun. We'll move on to staff reports, beginning with the city administrator's report.
Mayor and council, you will see there is no administration report this week, I just absolutely ran out of time. I will say that game night that was to be held on Monday has been postponed to tomorrow, so if you have not planned on coming, you really should come, we've got a lot of fun games planned.
Any question for the city administrator, Councilor Rosengard?
Board of adjustments is tomorrow night, six o'clock.
I'm sorry? No, Board of Adjustment has been canceled for lack of attendance. It's been rescheduled to their normal date, to April thirteenth.
Isn't that when the Trupiani farm to table?
Correct. We had two cases to be heard tomorrow, both applicants have been notified.
And I think the date of the board adjustments is April thirteenth?
Correct, to the, to the next regularly scheduled day of April thirteenth.
Is everyone gonna be in town for?
As far as we can tell, yes. So the code, we actually consulted with the city attorney also, the code requires alternates be appointed, so at the next council meeting, which is April the fifth, I believe, we are bringing forward some applications for appointment from you guys for alternates.
Any other questions for the city minister? Moving on to public works.
Good evening, mayor and council. You can ask me any questions you have about anything in the report, the one thing I was gonna highlight is that construction on the Violet Crown Trail has begun. If you have not been over to that space, they have begun construction on that, so you'll start seeing a lot of work happening over there, and hopefully, within the next nine months to a year, we'll have a nice trail connecting Sunset Valley over in that area. At this time, yeah, if there's any questions on anything on the public works report you have questions about, I will be happy to answer those.
Rose Garden?
The generator that you're looking at, isn't that supposed to be a portable generator that sits on the back of a pickup truck?
Yeah, it will be a portable generator, it, but the primary purpose of it will make sure that we have power for the lift station, emergency backup power for the lift station. If the lift station's up and running, we can use it other places as well, but it will be a portable style generator.
And it also sounds like we have a new employee?
We do, I for, oh, man, yes, we do have a new employee. Dakota Burns started yesterday with the city, he started working on some things with us yesterday, and we actually got him a computer hopefully up and running today, so he should be fully operational at this point. But yes, we're very excited to have him on. Back to the generator, it would probably be a pull behind a truck style generator, not a sit on top of the truck generator. We've worked with the engineers and to make sure that the generator supports not just the current lift station, but the lift station when it is rehabilitated, it would, it would work for both, it will work for the lift station now and in the future.
What was the name again, and what's their background?
Dakota Burns, he comes from the city of San Marcos, and before that, he was with the city of Buta. It's actually kind of funny, because he came in, I thought, if you, you know, some of you may have been at the last public works committee meeting, he, one of the, Dr. McMillan had pointed out, oh, there's this dip in the pavement on Brody, and so Dakota came in like yesterday, and he's like, well, I noticed you got a dip in the pavement on Brody, and I'm like, yes, we do. So he, like, yeah, he's very well-versed in streets and sidewalks and stormwater and stuff, so.
And then Councilor Lishfield and Councilor Johnson?
Great, and forgive me if I rewind a little bit, but the computer comment reminded me, did we make progress on computer upgrades or repurchases or whatever that was?
They were ordered, the monitors are here, a portion of computers are here, we're expecting everything to be here mid-May.
Excellent.
Councilor Johnson?
I was, I was out on the new trail, and I saw some chipping had happened, I thought we were pulling it out to be chipped, or did we get it?
We got an access agreement to bring the chipper in.
Okay, awesome.
So, yeah, so we were able to bring it, the chipper in and chip in the area, which really speeds up the work a lot.
Oh, yeah, and then the, I, I thought Youth Works was available March into April, it's April into?
It's April to May.
Okay, I, the M months, and the, yeah, all the months are difficult for me.
Also wanted to highlight for Carolyn, she also has an intern, a G I S intern, who's gonna begin some of that very important work of geo-tagging some very critical infrastructure for us.
Yeah, the first thing you'll see, well, we'll be putting up a really cool interactive trail map first, this is our first deliverable on that, so that'll be coming out.
All right, any other questions for public works? Mayor, for ten.
Yeah, I, I forgot one question for, for Sylvia, in reference to the archives in website. In website, at this moment only, we are looking one year, one and a half, so would be a good idea, you say that now, then, then we approve and we purchase the, something, then one of yours, they propose, I don't know who.
Yes, Laserfish, so, yes, right now, the current website only has one year on it, the old city website is still up. I promised a link, I didn't let Matt know, I'm sorry, that would point people to the old site if they still want to look and research, we'll just put a hyperlink. That's what Laserfish was for, and scrubbing the old site to bring all of those documents across into the new website. The old website will stay operational for a little while still.
Yeah, but soon they will transfer that to the new website, or we will continue using that?
No, it's a future project to bring them all over.
Okay.
There'll be, there'll be a public portal, so Laserfish, that, Laserfish will have all of the city documents on there, but there will be a public-facing portal where we can upload old agendas, minutes, and other documents that need to be public, and so it, it won't be integrated, well, it'll be accessible via the city's website, but it will be its own, its own website.
Yeah, thank, I had a little problem at this moment with the committees, so, and I was using the old system, but maybe if somebody knows how, and they can say, well, if you will go to the old website, you use ba, 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 a simple explanation, that will help.
Yeah, I'll show, so we have a, we have the page freezer, so, so I will show you how, like, I can call you this week and we'll, I'll show you how to access all of the old, the old documents.
Thank you very much, Matt.
And I think, is it something we could just post on the, like, temporarily put on the, until we get Laserfish up, like, a link to the old website, saying if you're looking for an archived document, you go there, or you recommend not doing?
I really didn't want to have the public looking at two websites, that's why I have the form, that if you're just looking for something, you know, you can request it, but I mean, I can, yeah, I, I didn't really want to say, oh, here's our old website, but I can do that if you all would like me to. I put a form, but, yeah, it's, if you don't know exactly what you're looking for, like, it might be hard, so I guess I can put the old, the old website.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I'm inclined to, you know, go along with what Matt says here, and it's like, we don't want people, because we're just gonna get questions about, like, why'd we change the domain, why isn't it updated, because it's, it's not the official, it's not the official website. And I, I've, I've uploaded seven gigs, so like fifteen thousand documents up to Laserfish right now, and Suzanne from, I forget the, the company is like six, six letters long, and it's just like an anagram. Just to kind of start totally, we're, we're like, on like a trial right now, until all the paperwork is signed and everything, I, I meant to like catch up with you about where payment was for both Laserfish and Page Freezer, because Page Freezer, they have it done, and every time I request to see it, they're like, we haven't been paid yet, so if we could make sure we're paid.
I believe that check went mailed yesterday, so.
Yeah, it's like literally getting mailed to them, because they're in Vancouver, so it's gonna be a couple days.
Point, he doesn't know what he's looking for half the time, so I don't know how to, like, that's gonna take up a lot of your time trying to figure out what he's looking for, when he's just doing research. So Nuaces Cad has a, a comment, because they switch websites, it says, you're gonna love our new site, but just in case you're used to the old site, just remember it's not maintained anymore, and there's a pointer there, and it, I mean, it looks really old, but, and the new one looks all nice and shiny, but maybe, because otherwise, I think you'll get inundated with stuff that, you know, sometimes people don't know what they're looking for.
Or just, or just provide it for, to council members, and then if we need to, we can reevaluate, if there's a lot of requests, they're taking up time, that might be, if you can send that link out to council as a first step, that way they can be researching.
I will do that, and maybe, maybe like committees, committee chairs do, in case they have any issues.
And Rob sent me a link to try out Laserfish, and I thought it, it was pretty good performance in terms of what.
You two had completely different experiences, because when you tried it, you're just like, it's slow, and I'm like, no, it's not, and I went, and it was slow right at the time that you had used it, which is like, the best thing you want from a, from a Q A tester is like, you know, hit the pain points, but then you used it five minutes later, and it's like, it's great, and I went and used it and it was great.
It was super fast, and, and, you know, obviously, it's, you know, it's bringing in all the text, you know, to, so you can do digital searches on, you know, any kind of word that's in a document, which is great, you know, and it's, it's.
I was actually trying to look for Macy Hertz's, like, the actual spelling of her first name, and so I was like, let me just go, and I don't think she's on any committees right now, so like, I just went to like Laserfish, and I just put in last name, and I found like, a letter from two thousand eight that her dad had written to, to like, Board of Adjustments or something about them building their house, so it was like, it's great, it's really great for research, I love it.
Much better than our other search. All right, any other questions for public works? Moving on to public, PD, Chief Carter?
Good evening, mayor and council. I will start with the security cameras, one more update on those. They still haven't moved the, one of the ones off of Brody onto two ninety near the Holiday Inn, they sent me a work, a work order letting me know that that's in the works, but, so we still have all the original cameras in the original locations, but we do anticipate moving them over there and being able to help out the Holiday Inn with some of the problems they've been having. And then also with the cameras, we had our first case where we apprehended someone that was one of our suspects from a road rage incident, really, I'm really impressed with these cameras, in case you haven't noticed, but we had a road rage incident where a man got mad, a woman who was, he thought was tailgating him, and they pulled into this, one of the shopping centers, he gets out of his car, opens her door, and then uses a tire tool to break her side view mirror. It's one of those things that happens all the time, that people get away, you don't ever think you're going to catch them. She got the license plate number, a week later, the camera catches them pulling into Sunset Valley Elementary, we pull in, we contact the suspect, and we get it all worked out, he's going to pay for what he did and all that, but that's one of those crimes that wouldn't, you would never have found the person. These cameras are really doing what we wanted them to do, and then they'll do even better once they get moved over to near the Holiday Inn. Also wanted to, there's been a lot of talk about the trails with spring coming, I noticed in next door that there was a lot of comments about safe trails around the area. We are going to start stepping up as best we can, our trail patrols, we've been able to get one of our reserves into the trail and patrolling a little bit at the beginning of the month, and then we're gonna make a big push this year to try to keep a consistent presence on the trails, so, as I anticipate that with the two years of COVID, the trails are gonna be really busy this year, busier than they have been in the past, and we'll be looking for, we're going to enforce unrestrained animals on the trails this year, we've been kind of, last lack of days at colon, very permissive about that, but this year, we're going to issue citations to people who are letting their dogs run loose on the trail, so probably gonna upset some people with that, because I know a lot of people have gotten used to getting away with that. Other than that, if you have any other questions?
Any other questions for Chief Carter? Mayor, for ten.
Yes, I, I think that for the leash, the only, if I remember, when we were working with the leash, the only place that they have open is here.
That's right.
But it's a triangle, and it's a triangle, because at the end, you pass to the trails, and in that trails, they don't allow to be free, the dogs, so I, I think that is confused, because when, when I am looking people from my home, I, I saw that they, they let the dogs running, so they go far, 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 and sometimes in that corner, where you have the dam, you have the road, in that corner is, is where they, they have some confrontation, sometimes with the animals, so I, I don't know if we need to, to have more signs, or all the city, but it will be tough, again, come back, come back for the leash, because with leash, the only neighborhood that we, we avoid to have the dogs free was in Villas. The other streets, they allow to have the dogs free, so here is, is a problem, because I saw people discussing, arguing for, for the animals, so what, what is your opinion? When you went to that place, did you see signs or something?
It, we're going to bring it back up for the Public Safety Committee, I think it's time to look at that issue again and see about making it an official policy citywide, but it's one of the issues that we're gonna bring up for Public Safety, but you are right that the people come into the trail here with their dog loose, and they don't know when they can't, when they have to put it on leash, I don't even think most people give it a thought, because they see us, the police are right here, and we don't say anything to them, because their dog is right there, and then, once they get on the trail, they're actually in violation.
Or perhaps, if we have a little more education from here, because if they, they park in the cars, and they will see a sign, not a sign that is forty inches by eight inches, a sign, and in that sign saying, please, if you have a dog, has some limitations, so that, that will help a lot.
It kind of made me think of a follow-up question, I have, I've seen dog confrontations, because that, it is weird that we have a boundary that begins when you're, you know, quarter mile onto the trail versus here, and, and, you know, there's a lot of, I think, feedback that we got is even for that incremental step of getting on the trail, but this made me more a question for Carolyn, one of the things that I was thinking about, because I, I encountered a group of runners the other day, who, they ran down the trail partway, and they came running back, and they were all like looking around confused, and I asked them, you know, what are they, what are they, you know, what are they looking for, and they were like, we just want to get to, to the street, and so then they went through our neighborhood, and like, but we have, we have signage in other parts of the trail that are trail maps, but we don't have one here. Is that, is that been something we, that we've had in the past, or is it something that has been asked for in the past?
So, that's a great question, so there is a signage, the technical trailhead for here is back in the woods, back there, there was discussion, there's always been this idea of keeping the trails kind of hidden, and so all the trailheads are kind of off, away from there, versus where people would gather information at this entry, so if we're ready to put an actual sign up where the trail actually starts, that would probably help with a lot of this.
I was just, I was just so amazed, I mean, this, like, a large group of runners at like, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, and they were just like, where's, where do we go?
Yeah, the trail map is, the trail map is back behind the trees back there.
I think it's, that would be great, you know, but that's maybe something that we want to get some resident input into, but I think this is the, where we direct people to park, you know, for other pla, you know, for other parts of the city, I think there makes sense to have, like, you know, this is where the trails are, and if this is where we want people to go, we don't want them getting lost out there. which can lead to public safety issues as well, be it people calling saying, you know, where, they, I don't think you'd probably get many of those calls, but you know, people could get confused if they're lost back there.
So we also have an item that Councilmember Rosen Garden is sponsoring about parking at the trailhead. So this dovetails perfectly because we're telling folks at Lone Oak to park here, but no trail map.
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I'm always gonna look at these cameras with a little bit of like wariness, like very libertarian about it. Just, you know, just, I want to keep an eye on it. But man, I love hearing the reports of like how successful they've been. I mean, like, what a great return on investment, like already. And I don't know, I, I just, like, what must be going through that guy's mind? You know, when he gets pulled for like, you know, hitting someone's like mirror, he, I'm sure he thought he was gone. And I don't know, I love that.
Mayor Pritham?
Yeah, Foster, do we need more cameras? Because I was thinking how we forgot Holiday Inn. Holiday Inn then gave it to us $260,000 per year. This is the income that we have, and I don't know why we didn't have them, perhaps other places where needs to be more. Home Depot, we have that parking lot more from Home Depot than is very important. The other is Academy, all the places. Because at the beginning, that was only 10 cameras. But if he's much better, another five cameras more.
I, I wanted to get some success stories, quite a few of them. And then we, we plan to visit with all the property managers at the, in the retail center and get them to get cameras for their entrances specifically for them, Holiday Inn as well. We're doing the one over near Holiday Inn, but we're going to speak to them about actually getting them for the entrances to their properties. The price is relatively low, $2,500, $100 a year. And we're, we're gonna go into a presentation with them. We've already started with the loss prevention officers at the, some of the stores that get hit by the organized retail theft. We've, we were in contact with them last week. But the goal is to get them to get their own cameras and we'll link them into our cameras. One of the reasons that they don't get cameras, especially like hotels, Holiday Inn, is because they don't monitor the cameras. Well, we're going to monitor the cameras for them. So that's a big selling point for that. I think they won't have a problem getting the cameras themselves. But if they don't, I'll come back to you and ask for more.
We used to lose a lot of catalytic converters. So we still with that problem or they install cameras also in that place?
They contacted Locksafety, the people that we did about getting some. I'm pretty sure they're going to get some and that's still a very big problem in this area. So I'd be surprised if they don't. There's a few other cities nearby that are about to get cameras as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Safety? All right, let's move on to items which, agenda item number four, which is council consideration and agenda items for approval on consent. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, minutes with typo corrections. Number six, Art Fest permit. Number seven, surveillance and access control. And on the typo corrections, it is delete the questions and comments from council members right underneath. Number two, citizen comments because we cannot discuss if it's not on the agenda. And number 10, time certain, that should be 700. Not 700. Number 10, at the end of the second line. Minor, okay.
You see what happens when you go on vacation? It's just a joke, no?
All right, the motion is to approve on consent, item number five, number six, number five with corrections. Number six and number seven, is there a second? Councilmember Reed's.
I'll second.
All right, anybody willing to pull one of those items? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, item number five, consider an act on approval of minutes from March 8th, 2022, regular meeting with the two corrections identified by Councilmember Rosen Garden. Number six, consider an act on approval of a temporary special use permit for the Sunset Valley Arts Commission for the use of Tony Burger Center to host Arts Fest on April 30th, 2022. And number seven, consider an act on approval of request for proposal for surveillance and access control systems for city facilities. And Council, that'll take us to item number eight, presentation and discussion of possible staff direction on amendments to Chapter 31 committees, aligning the committees to appointment to the fiscal year. And so Council, this is coming out of some discussions we had last year with the joint sessions of the committees. There's also a retreat. And I think Staff, do you want to begin with a presentation of the potential language that might be used if we decide to want to, we want to move forward on this?
Sure, the amendment would be to 3117B. As opposed to it being appointed at the first regular meeting following the city elections, it would be at the last meeting in September in alignment with the fiscal year so that committees may be seated at the commencement of the fiscal year.
And so Council, this is something that we, this is a discussion item because I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for us to look at this over and also give the public a couple of opportunities at this, you know. If we do decide to bring this back as an action, you know, this would be something that we might get additional feedback on. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
The only thing I was wondering is how does the new council member feel that they didn't get to appoint their committee? And so I went through and I said, okay, they don't get to appoint the first committee, but they get to appoint the next two. So the next new person doesn't get to choose their committee members.
Yes, they'd get some, some appointment choices, but not, not universal like they do now, yeah. And the, I think the other thing that was brought up as a discussion that this would mean that when we have, you know, a change in council, the liaisons would be changing after the election cycle. So there might be, you know, a new liaison for some committees. That's, you know, the, the balance here is what's the preference of, you know, it's kind of the functional organization of the committees versus, you know, some of the trade-offs we have. But that's something else to consider that we did talk about as well. Councilmember Johnson?
I was just gonna say that I see that as almost more of a feature than a bug, you know. Sometimes it's nice if you're just like forced to work with whoever.
Councilmember Reed's?
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of this and it seems like it was pretty unanimous with the committee chair. So I mean, I think, you know, I'm ready to move this forward.
Yeah, I think particularly the comments with the ones that rely on budget, like the Arts Commission or Budget and Finance, you know, that they rely on that cycle and that's, you know, much better alignment. Any further discussion on this, Council? So I think we'll be bringing this back as an agenda item for approval on our next meeting.
Yes, we'll put it on the agenda. The, the comment Matt and I were discussing earlier was that at the end of this year, because we talked about two-year appointments at retreat and some folks said no because they can't commit. So this year, as opposed to starting all over, we would have a window called Opportunity for Resignation and Appointments, right? So if you wanted to leave a committee, you could leave a committee. But if you wanted to be appointed to a committee, you could be appointed to a committee. You would leave the chairs and vice chairs and the existing committee as is. But, you know, if you want to come off or you want to come on, there would be that window, sort of open enrollment, if you will.
Yeah, if we could include in the backup for the, the agenda item, how we're gonna handle that process and then we can always, you know, look for feedback from the community as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pritham?
Can, can you explain to me, I think that that would be, they say the last meeting in September. So it cannot be the last meeting on October or on November. It, it cannot be in that way.
Well, the fiscal year begins October 1st. And so the idea being that we'd want the committees to be appointed before October 1st so they can have their first meeting in October after the fiscal year starts.
We are looking that for, for the money mainly because, or for the ideas of the people. Because I, I don't believe that the committees, they, they don't request too much. Only the, the budget and finance, they can start with, with the budget. But the other committees, I don't see too much with, with the money. I can see more with the ideological way how the people, they think. Because if somebody, they say September, maybe they can pick something and if other people, they apply for, for that position as a council member, they don't have that freedom to be talking with that people. I, I don't know, I, I think that we are doing this as a, for everybody and not necessarily, in my opinion, apply for all the committees. This is all that I tried to say. And, and one of the ideological is, is important. Because if we are thinking at this moment for the best of the city and you have a members of the, this, this, this board or the council, they, they have maybe similar ideas or they are together. And maybe somebody's total different. It would be hard sometimes to work with that person. But I am free to go in any way, but I don't believe that it's a good justification for all of them, only the money.
I think my primary, money is a part of it because in addition to Budget and Finance, there are committees like Arts Commission that work within, within existing year's budget, right? That's another committee that, or commission in this case, that, that relies on whatever budget was approved in order to plan their events primarily. The, the bigger issue for me has always been when we do our appointments after the election, we lose time. We typically lose about two months in terms of committee work over the winter break. And that's because by the time we seat a council, which is mid-November, and then we ask for, and then if we open up applications, it's December before we make appointments. Sometimes it's January, the committees don't really meet until January. I'd really like us to, to look at, you know, not to say the committees have to meet during winter break, but I don't, I, I see a loss of efficiency that outweighs the ideological benefits, you know, with aligning for, from the election cycle. I also think that nothing prevents somebody, for example, I was thinking about the scenario too, about, okay, what if somebody is running for council and they don't get counsel? Now the, the process may be, well, maybe they want to serve on a committee instead, right? So that's kind of like the natural process now. I mean, there's nothing that prevents us from appointing people out of cycle, right? So that's something that I think we just also can consider as well is that appointments happen one time a year, but if there's a resident says, hey, I was planning on serving the city in some capacity. I wasn't elected, I'd like to serve, can you, can we bring that forward? That's, that's, the council can take that action, you know, anytime. So I think that's something we might also look at evaluating too in terms of, you know, the one-off cases like that. So that's where I'm coming from and I just want to make sure, you know.
Yeah, thank you for your explanation, but now it's clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosen Garden? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lishfield.
I was gonna bring up the topic that you just did actually, where with that turnover window. It might be nice to codify that or just make sure, you know, eventually it will be precedent. You know, that around an election time, you know, there's maybe some committee churn as people are, you know. Maybe we just have to make a note to be very open to it and somebody needs to set an example around the next election, just so that we have precedent for it.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
That was a great point that you brought that up. I never thought about that. Same thing with Board of Adjustments or zoning. So if somebody doesn't make it on council, but they really want to serve, Board of Adjustments is a, a commission where they make final decisions. They couldn't join, they'd have to wait out if that was the commission they wanted to be on. Something to think about.
Any further discussion on this, Council? We'll get another shot at this too if we're bringing this back to determine if we're gonna move forward with it, with a vote. Right, we're gonna move on to agenda item number nine, which is presentation, discussion and possible staff action on agenda and packet codification. And so Council, this is an item that is tied to one of our objectives from the retreat, which is council being informed about, about the agenda and going back to the idea of our calendar. And this also stems from some feedback in terms of, you know, we want to make sure that not only councils are prepared, but committees are prepared and there are some, there's some limits on what we can do when, when we're talking about the agenda itself. But we also have some, you know, I think some need for standardizing the process around the backup and when, when we're gonna, if we're gonna adhere to what's in our code, if we need to make some changes to the code, especially with regards to the sections that were highlighted in the staff backup. You know, where I think there's some looseness around the phrasing about the backup of repotted as reasonable, as soon as reasonably possible, right? Which is, you know, does that mean Monday? Does that mean Friday? Does that mean when the agenda is posted? So there's, I'll hand it over to Staff to do a kind of presentation. And then we also have Barbara here for weighing in on some of the, the questions about, you know, what's legally required, but also maybe some examples of what do the cities do, you know, as far as the backup, not only for council, but for committees.
I'll let Barbara start from the legal perspective.
So first off, as the preliminary information is, is set out here, there is a very much a demarcation between what needs to be provided for notice purposes for the public and what needs to go out to council. And obviously council wants to get information as much as it possibly can, but it, it's not a 72-hour window necessarily by law. I mean, it can be your parameter of what you want, but it's not required by state law. Let me say that. It's not a requirement that you have to have the packets all put together and nicely tidied up and Matt putting them on the, you know. The agenda is the only thing that is required. That said, though, I think that other cities that I'm familiar with and work with, I have to get closer. It's very weird having that thing brought to you. Sorry about that. So other cities that I work with, they have a variety of procedures that they follow. Sometimes they have a process whereby they, they start preparing, you know, like three weeks out for an agenda. And that's not unusual, sometimes it's even four weeks out. Depends on what is actually part of the packet. So the longer that you can give your staff to prepare those things, the better the, the packet will be. And I know Sylvia had a sample, there it is, sample calendar. And that's actually very helpful for everybody to understand because if somebody else is trying to get, you know, from the outside is trying to get something on the agenda and they want to get before you or get something, you know, prepped, if they know when there's some deadlines, it's helpful. It's very helpful for them to be able to say, oh, okay, well, I've got to get this to so-and-so, Carolyn or, you know, whatever, by X date. And, and that does help. But it helps primarily in the staff not running around at the last second trying to pull things together and getting it, you know, all tidied up and everything. So they're gonna be having a roll, you know, if, if you work with this, you'll have like a rolling kind of preparation that Matt and Sylvia will be driving in the sense that they've got, you know, that they'll have something to, you know, two, three, four weeks out that they'll get going. And then they'll keep adding to it and adding to it. And then they'll come to a deadline in which, you know, everything stops and nothing further gets added. Some cities I know, they have a process under which the city administrator or the city manager or the mayor might have the ability to authorize a last-minute addition to the packet so that you're not left hanging in case there's a, there's some, you know, something that you're waiting on that just didn't come in. Some report, some survey, some whatever that really was necessary and it just didn't come in. So that's always helpful to have a caveat in there or a little, hey, if, you know, not the rule, but an exception to the rule is that you would have, you know, some last-minute thing that could get added if it was necessary for you all to understand the, the actual project or whatever it was that they were bringing forward. So those are mainly the things that I see in my other cities. The cities, I will say. The cities, I will say that the cities that I work with that don't have a very good process, it's like herding cats when agendas go out. Because nobody is in, I mean, I can't say nobody, but very few people are truly in charge, and it's really difficult to get everything cobbled together. You can get an agenda out, but you can't, packets are something else. So those are the things, you know, and everybody's dashing around at the last second to try and get that done. I just think it is better if you do provide some sort of process and procedure that allows you all to get your packets in a more methodical fashion. It helps, what it does also though, is it translates back to even earlier meetings on some other things like P and Z, Board of Adjustments, anything like that that might play into what's moving forward. Now, that might also be something where you say, no, we're going to, you know, allow that to be a last-minute add if it got pushed on an agenda for some other committee meeting. But for the most part, you can, you know, if you draw the line in the sand and say, hey, everything had to be ready for the March 23 meeting, and now you're going back and you say, okay, so P and Z has to have its stuff done by X. And that means then that that packet has to get done by Y. So it feeds upon itself, but it provides ultimately a much more orderly process for actually getting this information together. And there's not the last-minute hiccups and, you know, running around at the last second going, oh, my gosh, I forgot to put that in there. And mistakes that, you know, kind of reduces that. So that's my thoughts. I'm happy to answer any more questions.
And just to clarify, so if we followed our current code right now for backup, which is, you know, the statement is, if at all physically possible, at least 11 calendar days preceding each regular council meeting. So we give us a little wiggle room because we say, if at all physically possible, which is a weird phrasing. But that would essentially mean, you know, 11 days before a council meeting, which is the Friday, and not calendar, or not business days, calendar days, which is the Friday, two Fridays before the next council meeting, right? So if we look in a calendar, if we are looking at a meeting on the 22nd of March, that means all the backup would have to be submitted in at least in a draft form on that Friday before, right? Which means the backup can continue to get it worked, but it means like basically it has to be substantially complete by the 11th, which we're not following that process now, right? We're not getting all the backup kind of done. You know, we're having exceptions done for that in many cases, I think. Like when a Board of Adjustments meets in between that window and we're relying on their output or like zoning commission, things like that. But that was one mechanism that we already have in place that we've just say, let's move with, you know, our current code or per staff recommendation, adjusting it to 11 business days, which push that even back further, right? And then I think it becomes a question about, well, what does it look like when that's submitted? It's, you know, in the code, it says, "Item submitted to the city secretary: All reports, communications, ordinances, resolutions, contract documents, or other supporting documentation regarding the requested agenda item submitted." Or, you know, we either adhere to that or we look at some other mechanism. I think there's a mechanism in there right now where we just say, let's just, you know, have that as part of our agenda. And then becomes a question of, okay, when is it provided by council? And what exceptions can be done for, you know, who gets to grant the exceptions? You know, when there's a case where something needs to get substituted in because of a change or a priority or some importance. And then when does that get provided to council? You know, is the expectation that that's always when the addition is posted? Is it by close of business Friday, you know, the weekend before or the Friday before council, so there's time for staff to do cleanup? Those are things that I wanted to discuss and come up with a process. And Sylvia, go ahead, and then we'll go to council members.
So from the perspective of having managed agendas, it's really never a good idea to codify those kinds of things as backup. It just isn't. You don't end up having the flexibility that you need to add or subtract because you can't deviate from that. I say that for the backup or applications or those kinds of things. You need to have some administrative flexibility. But the way things are running right now, I don't believe we're giving you, Mayor, the opportunity to create what is essentially your agenda. So you get it, but we've already sort of crafted it. And then you're kind of stuck with, well, maybe this one shouldn't go on this one, but it's been waiting to go, so it's on there. And then to add fuel to that, sometimes things are coming out of committee that have an expectation for a quick turnaround for council. And so we're still adding things that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to a Thursday posting. And so staff does their backup, but it's always Matt and I going through and, you know, reading, making sure the attachments match and hunting down staff or hunting down a document and hunting and hunting and pecking and then hoping to God it's complete and there aren't any, you know, we didn't miss something, and then, you know, Matt's off, I'm off. It's kind of crazy. So my thought is, before we codify or make any significant changes, let's stick to what the ordinance says. But the only difference is the business days. Because the ordinance kind of calls that out right now. It says Thursday before the Tuesday meeting. If you really think about that, that's Thursday, Friday, Monday. That's 72 hours. We've given ourselves 120 hours. And I believe the ordinance was interpreted to be three business days prior to the agenda. But if we back things up the way they should be according to the ordinance, I think it gives number one, staff preparation time. But more importantly, when we meet, you and I and the mayor pro tem, you should be the one deciding, okay, these are the draft documents that have been submitted with this agenda. This one may take a little bit more time, so this one should be moved to this date. And we're working collaboratively on a calendar that doesn't keep us here till 10:00, 10:30 at night, right? Because there's a decision on what is baked and what isn't baked. Half-baked, totally baked. And right now, I feel like sometimes we're bringing pudding and we really meant to bring a cake. So that would be staff's recommendation. Plus, everybody's been asking about that Google Doc, that calendar, that look ahead. It's hard to give you a look ahead when we don't even know what that look ahead looks like sometimes. We do the best we can in our post-review. Matt and I'll go through and go, okay, this is on there, this is on there, this is on there. Throw in the committee stuff, throw in resident requests, and then throw in those sort of errant council, like I had a talk with the resident, we need to see this for discussion on the next agenda kind of thing. So just putting some order to it. And I think the ordinance was good when it was written to allow for that kind of stuff. And I also don't want to, I don't want to cut off the ability for council's own backup, right? Because the way the ordinance reads, it's your collective agenda. It's your collective work. You have to provide the supporting documents. You have to be the sponsor to that agenda item. But what Wanda submits may be different than what Rob submits. And so they both may get their point across, but she may have 10 sheets and he may have two sheets. So I don't want us to go down the rabbit hole of actually following some type of codification of what backup should look like. But rather, let's focus on the substance of the issue and whether you, as the mayor, believe it's ready to move forward.
Yeah, I think part of this is just, I want to avoid the situations where backup is not provided in sufficient time for council to be informed, right? This kind of goes back to that point. And I feel like there's been instances recently, and this also not just council, but also committees, where the backup has either needed to change or has changed, you know, within a very short window and turnaround. And so that's something that I want to have a process in place to avoid. And so that's, if we want to strictly adhere to, you know, what the code is, and we have that insurance in place, and then it's posted and it's complete. If there's any sort of minor changes that need to happen, like missing links, things like that, we want to have the flexibility to do that. But I just want to make sure that council feels that they have sufficient time with the material ahead of time. So we'll go to council member input, and this is Councilor Reese.
So I was going to reiterate, yeah, I think we do need that flexibility built into it. And I agree that y'all need time to get things in order. There's no problem, because I'm probably an abuser of the system here, you know. And so I think, I think we should have, I mean, before, you know, under Mayor Cardona, it was, you saw what was going to be on the agenda like a month ahead of time. And so you knew, I can't even fit my item on that one. It's going to be bumped down here. So there was kind of a race to get your item on the agenda. So something like that would be helpful. And we need to be able to have the flexibility to bring up projects like, I think of the small business loan. That was the very fast, and we responded very quickly. So we need to have some flexibility. But, yeah, 11 days is okay, so.
That flexibility would be at the mayor's discretion. So right now, what happens is, you guys tell Matt and I, we put a placeholder on the agenda. By the time the mayor sees it, we've kind of already started working on it. We're, you know, 45, 55% on it. So he kind of is like, hmm, it's probably a full agenda, but okay, you promised it. Sometimes he'll say, no, move it. But for the most part, and this is mostly giving it back to him and saying, yeah, council member Reese asked for an item that council believes is a goal and is very important to put on, yeah, we're going to go ahead and put it on. So, yeah, that decision would be ultimately back to him and not with us.
I'm okay with that.
Mayor Pro Tem and then, or Councilor Johnson, then Mayor Pro Tem? Okay, go by order.
Sure, yeah, you've already addressed the inflexibility, but that was my worry as well. Government kind of gets a bad name for not being flexible, and then we're just trying to like, you know, make it even more inflexible. And I kind of, and Mark's been really good with how, I'm, you'd probably know, you'd definitely know, like, who is like the latest when it comes to submitting? And I'm pretty sure it might be me. Minor sometimes easy ones, though. But the, but I think there's been like one time, one time for sure where you're like, it ain't happening. And I just had to like kind of take my toys and go home. And I don't know if there's a lot of like pushback from other council members, like when that happens? Like, I'm kind of, I don't want to be.
Not this particular council. We did, the prior council, there was a significant amount of pushback because as Wanda said, they had the super at-a-glance calendar. And Rose and I would work specifically for like the two Mondays before to make sure things were done. And she would, no soup for you kind of thing. No, it's not quite on the agenda. And so there was a race to get things down. So a lot of times, the agenda was already too large to put anything on it to be able to have any meaningful conversation or discussion about it. So she would cut it. And then some of the council members would, you know, you're not giving me my fair airtime.
I think the counterpoint to that is that I think I'm reasonable, you know, when I'm having discussions, but I can't get out of the habit of having 10 o'clock meetings. I'm obviously doing something wrong, you know, in terms of like.
Well, Matt, do you want to say something before?
I was just going to say that I think we really need to follow our ordinance. I mean, and I've been, even before I was city secretary, I was always helping, you know, a long time ago, Regine and Clay with agendas. So I've seen this so much that I think a lot of times, staff and council members want to help applicants out. So right for these developers that come in or they've got something tough. And it's like, oh, man, you know, they're on a time crunch. And so we all work together to like get them on the agenda, and then it might not be ready or, you know. So I think we have to be, you know, the gatekeepers, staff, and say, well, you know, this item is due, you know, if it's not ready, 11 days. Because then it'll just give staff time to prepare the backup, and it'll give you all time to know what's coming and have some time to review. Because I know sometimes, you know, we post on a Thursday and you have, you know, hundreds of pages of backup to go through in a week.
Well, it's just a, because I know Mayor Pro Tem and I have talked about this with staff, is that some backup, we actually want to get out earlier, even if it's in a draft format and particularly with the variances. Because those are hard issues, and those are things that, if it's posting on Thursday night and you have 72 hours of, you know, or you have 120 hours or whatever to work, it's really not enough time. And so that's one of the, part of the, you know, things that we, the calendar that we've adopted is having a placeholder where the draft of the backup gets sent out to council. And we did, we tried that with the 64 or 5 last time to say, council, here's what's coming. Get your questions in so the engineers can address them before we actually have to post the backup so that we don't have to address it as a council, and then it gets kicked down further. So I think things like that, there are some things that we, as a procedure, we want to actually, you know, do as part of this rhythm as well. But Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that everybody has their point. Sometimes when I am looking the agenda, I am thinking, how we can have 19 topics? How we can have 18 topics? Now, I saw years and years ago, 27 topics, 24 topics. And I say, it's impossible. It's impossible that you will have a meeting that will be six or seven hours sitting at that time. Now, with 14 topics and some of them with some degree of discussion that is important, sometimes I say, how we balance that? And I think that is a little homework with the city administrator than when they have some developers to set some schedule with that developers. And with that developers, try to have some chronology, how you can have them, and in that way, we cannot have two together or three. And with this plan, it's amazing. It's very good when you are looking the 11 days that is part of the ordinance and the five days than when they gave it to you that. I think that the only person that knows who is coming is the staff. So the staff, they know, we will have at this moment four developers. So how we plan to schedule that for developers? And this developer, he wants a plating plate. He wants this, he wants this, he wants that. So perhaps that menu from that specific developer require five meetings from us. And that is tough because sometimes they are together. So I think that it's important that knowing when they are telling me, it's the 45 days. And I don't know what they would say. No, what is the legal? Now, in the legal, how we can fit that in that calendar? Because that calendar didn't say, what happened if at this moment we are disagreeing with one developer? And they say, well, we can have some repercussions because at this moment, we are in the 45 days. And for me, when I hear that, I didn't know. I didn't know about that rules. But you know the rules. So you have to help us that sometimes some specific topics, they will require more time and more sessions than we will have, and they have a time limit. So in that way, we can be prepared. I am not against that calendar than they used to have with topics and topics and topics. Then I think that at this moment, I have a lot of respect from you, Mayor, than you let us to have some freedom. So a few minutes ago, council member Wanda, she say, I abuse sometimes because with her topics or that kind of things. But this is power. This is how we need to be. If we want to be active, we need to have that opportunity. And you, as a leader, you have also a lot of ideas. And you are a quarterback that you move what kind of topics this time, what kind of topics the other time. But they need to help us. If they don't help us, this is not so simple as looks like that. Because when we say, no, no, with 48002 or 48 something was in one way. And later we went to 6405 and was in different way. And we were in 4715 was different way. So, and we didn't know. So if it's a rule, the legal, she say, well, you have some freedom. But how much freedom we have sometimes with the developers? This is an I don't know.
So, it's, what's missing in our, in our ordinance and our calendar is, in the development process, the shot clock that everybody refers to is when an application is deemed complete, right? We don't have that in our ordinance right now, when an application is deemed complete. So, when they submit, we've assumed to have taken it, and the shot clock started. So, we either have to reject it out of the system, or you have to reject it at the DIES. And rejecting it at the DIES is not what we want to do. So, one of the things I'm bringing forward to you guys in that development process discussion is, we as a staff, the gatekeeper, needs to say, this application is not complete, and continue working with them until you have something that is complete and fully baked. That's the first thing. The second thing is, applications have a lot of different, some of them, forty-seven fifteen, for example, had parking and impervious cover. Two ninety had parking, impervious cover, fire lane, eaves, et cetera, et cetera. So, every one of those milestones is a different deemed complete, because you're addressing a different section of the ordinance. So, we need to do a better job in our development process, and not just take everything that comes in the way the ordinance is written today. That's how we can stagger, and that's how you have the time to see it before it's actually presented to you.
Councilmember Reese.
So, do we need a stopgap right now? That y'all would propose to us, that takes in according to what a complete application is, and when the shot clock actually starts?
Yes.
So, y'all will propose that?
Yeah, that's an agenda that we had to push off from this last meeting, but it's coming up in a future meeting, so. So, I think, some of the feedback, and having that projected view is something that's been requested, so I think that's what, I will put something together, work with staff to get that view in some way. We have a pseudo version of that in Teams right now, but it's not as easily accessible for, you know, just like, looking at a glance, you know, what's coming out. And I think that's, that would be really helpful. I would like us to try to adhere to the schedule that we have in our, so we can get into the, you know, the habit of saying, eleven, you know, days, you know, we're going to give, we're going to have that, and that gives us time to prepare. There will be exceptions that we are, we're going to need to have at certain times, and we just want the flexibility, but we want to, we want to keep as close as possible. I'm okay on the calendar versus business, you know, to me, I'm not sure, you know, I have a preference, but just giving staff more time, so we, we're adhering to that. Yeah, so.
I really would also request that we not change any of the backup seventy-two hours before. And if we do, Barbara's recommendation is, we do the legislative version, the strikeout, and, you know.
Yeah, I agree. I think it gets confusing when we have backup that gets substituted, and it's not clear. So, I think, just as a practice, if we don't change our backup, if it, within seventy-two hours, it should be complete, right? It should be ready and done.
Let me clarify that. There, that's for substantive issues. Like, somebody changed their mind about a recommendation or something like that. If Matt needs to correct a link, or Matt needs to correct, you know, that's, that's different. That's.
I think that the exception should be, either the city secretary has the authority to make minor corrections, or the mayor is the one that approving those, right? So, I think, yeah. Right.
It gets confusing for everybody, like, which backup were you supposed to be looking at? Version one, version two, you know, so, anyway.
And then we have some council members that prefer paper versus digital, and there's differences there that have to get, you know, kind of for as well. Councilmember Rosengarten.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on thirty point oh-three agenda postings, if you use eleven business days, then should we all switch, also switch from five calendar days to three business days, as far as time for us to prepare? So, we're using the same language, using the same calendar?
That, that would be good. Right now, that's the practice. You know, sometimes we say, well, we have until Saturday to post. Like, when retreat happened, legally, we have until Saturday to post, but that's in conflict with our own ordinance, so.
And then when it says, additionally, amendments to backup should only be done when approved by the mayor, after a determination that the amendments are not substantive in nature, should we add, when approved by the mayor and discussed with the sponsor? Because if this is discussed without the sponsor, and the sponsor doesn't know that either it's killed or it's approved?
Good addition.
Yeah, I think that, in this case, the presumption is, but it would be, make sure it's clear in the, in the language, is that there's a, the sponsor recognizes that there's a change need to be made to the backup, right? And it's, maybe staff is giving them that, or maybe their own, you know, preparation is giving that. It's been posted, they, they want to update it, it's a substantive change, they need to get with the mayor to say, this is the change, so we can, you know, we have that exception process. I don't, I wasn't envisioning the, where the mayor's saying, I want to rewrite this and not contact the sponsor, which, we don't want that abuse, though, so, you know, that's, that's clear.
There are different mayors.
Yes. Other council members that had their hands raised? We'll open it up for the public to comment on this as well, since we wanted to get input on these items before we bring back any, any changes for action.
Thank you, Melissa Gonzalez, twenty-six, Reese. As a person who regularly reads the agenda and the backup, and has had a lot of problems with the backup changes, I would really appreciate not having to track Matt down and say, Matt, what changed? Because it'll say revised agenda, and it won't say what the revision is. So, I think, to me, the most important thing is, if you're going to revise the agenda, you say what, what the revision is. And, and it's really clear, because otherwise, you've just spent hours going over, for those of us who do actually comb the agenda, and you don't know what changed. And, and, and so, you know, and it's not noted. And so, that's a really, really frustrating point. And then, you know, if you're a person who will make a case that there's something wrong with whatever the point is, because you're taking exception, and then it changes again, and you didn't even know it changed. So, you know, because I'll go and I'll perhaps say, hey, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and then it disappears. And so, then I've written my points, and there's, it's not even valid anymore, and it's been erased. You know? So, it's really frustrating, as a member of the public, who has put a lot of effort to doing it, and then it just disappears. And so, that's not good process. And, and it's frustrating, and I think, you know, people have been upset about that, besides myself, in the past. So, you know, just where there's always the PDF, right? Because with the links, everything just disappears. And then you look like an idiot, and you've spent a lot of time researching, and maybe it's fixed a problem, but it's just gone. And that's not fair to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's what you're talking about, Sylvia, I think in terms of like, the legislative sort of editing, saying, this is what's changed, when we get to the point within, within a certain window? I agree, you know, that that's, we want to have that ability to show what's changed to residents who, you know, or members of council, too. I mean, that's also just a part of the workload, so. Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
I, so when we were talking to the Laserfish company, they, I mean, their main thing is document management, and this is, that issue is exactly what this would solve. And I was just like, ah, that's really cool, but it adds more kind of like, structure to the way that we do things. Maybe we lean into that a little bit more, because there should be a diff tool. As soon as she said that, I was like, GitHub. What we need is, you know, GitHub is for code changes and stuff like that, you know that. But, you know, Laserfish could be leveraged for that, but that becomes, maybe it would pay for itself on both sides, because, you know, we could also get like, proper tagging to the documents as they're going in as well, so.
I mean, is that like, an added feature then, to do that?
I, I think, I think it's just stock, like, I.
Oh, it's stock, okay.
Well, it was like, one of the big selling points, and we're like, ah, you know, we just need something to easily search old stuff.
Yeah.
No, when I've used it, it's, when I've used it, it's stock. We use it in Corpus Christi. It's, it's stock. You can see the versioning. You can see versioning in OpenGov. You can see what, you know, what changed. You, you have to make a concerted effort to go see the version, but.
Okay. I'm going to be mean with Suzanne. Maybe I can get you into that meeting as well, and we'll just.
I will say that, you know, that most of the time that a packet changes, it is, it is, okay, so, an attachment with, you know, didn't get included, or there was a typo or something, you know, that, I would say, you know, ninety percent of the time, that's what it is, like, oh, oh, we forgot this, or someone submitted this late. But, yeah, I think that if, if the packet is changed within the seventy-two hour window, there should probably be like, a, you know, a note of, oh, this was added, or, you know, just for the trail, for the purposes of the trail. Maybe that will be fixed with Laserfish, so that'll be great.
So, Council, I think we'll be bringing back some proposed changes, whether it's code or just codification in terms of our, our process, you know, changes that we want to adopt as the next step on this item. But any further discussion on this one? All right. Thank you very much. That'll move us to our last agenda item. So, Council, this is another one that has come out of some discussions, but particularly with regards to council, informing council about potential legislative or attorney general, you know, decisions that have, that may influence our ability to, you know, kind of operate as we have been, what I'd say, in kind of the heightened pandemic mode versus what our traditional mode pre-pandemic was. It was very rare to see council members attend committee meetings, right? You know, you had to make an effort, it was maybe one at most, right? But now, we have this kind of flexibility. And so, there has been some discussion about that in some committees, but more particularly, I've talked to, had discussions with Barbara, and there are actually some, some legal concerns as well. And so, this is where I was hoping that Barbara could give us a little bit more information, and, and we might want to take some steps towards, you know, having policies in place for, for ourselves, to protect ourselves as a city.
So, when you have, shoot, meetings where, if you are, you're the liaison, appropriately attending your committee meeting, not an issue. Suddenly, there's a quorum of council that's attending the very same meeting. That's an issue. It's an issue because you are hearing information that you will later be making a decision about. You're not supposed to. Not that you can't hear, I mean, you're, not that you can't go back and listen to the committee and all that sort of thing. You can do all of that. You just can't be all together, even on a Zoom, listening in at the time. You can do your due diligence at the back end, researching and listening to committee meetings and what have you. But when you're all together, either in a room, or on Zoom, or whatever platform you're on, when you are all together in one place, one, Matt's got to put some disclaimer out there, maybe he does on a regular basis, possible quorum by all, you know, council members, no business will be, you know, blah, blah, blah. But, there's agey opinions out there that indicate that by the having a quorum at your meetings, even committee meetings, even committee meetings that you have indicated are not to be adhering necessarily to the Open Meetings Act. Doesn't mean that you, as council people, are not supposed to be adhering to the Open Meetings Act. So, you all need to be cautious. Sitting and passively listening to things that will come before you is not good. Again, go back, listen to the meeting afterwards, absolutely. I know it doesn't afford you the opportunity to ask questions, or, but you're not supposed to be anyway, necessarily. You can find out things in other ways. You can go ask Sylvia afterwards. You can, you know, I mean, those are all ways that, you can talk to the committee chair if you wanted to. You can talk to a committee member if you wanted to. But you all, having a quorum of yourselves at one of those meetings, is concerning to me as your legal advisor.
And we do put, Barbara, we do, so, even way before I and Sylvia's time, all the committee meetings have on, you know, the bottom, that disclaimer that, a quorum of the city council may be present, however, no action shall be taken. I believe that's how it reads.
Yeah, and I think that that disclaimer is, what I'm hearing from our legal, is that that's not enough, right? That there is, even if, even if it's just passively attending, and we're not asking questions, if there's a quorum present, there's a potential legal issue with, with that in the Open Meetings Act with council members. And so, the, the recommendation from legal is to not do that.
To not do that, okay.
So, I'll, we can discuss this further, but, you know, I'm kind of interested in what solutions we might have, or what, what are the questions we might have for Barbara as well? Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Rosengarten.
I, I think I, not that I had an issue with it, but I've, I feel like this is a large platform for council members. You know, this is where like, decisions get made, and so, I try to, if I want to listen in on another, on some committee, I try to just keep my mouth shut, unless it's like, a very, I don't know, small question, but I try not to like, opine about like, my feelings on anything. To hear that, we couldn't even attend, but just not be recognized, just passively kind of in the audience. I mean, if that, if that is the, like, a legal kind of position on it, I guess, but, you know, the, I don't know, that, that feels like very heavy-handed, like, I am not a lawyer, you know? And it's just like, I obviously don't like read opinions all the time, but that, it seems crazy to me that like, there couldn't be a Board of Adjustments meeting or a zoning commission, where it's like, you know, it's pretty far out of our, I don't know, and it, it's not an advisory, I don't know. But, you know, if you came to show up, and I saw that like, Rudy and Alfonso were at a meeting, I'd be like, I guess I got to leave, even though it's like, we're not talking. I don't know. At some point, it's like, if you were going to violate open meetings by like, talking about like, the three of us like, talking about it, then that's kind of like, on us. And it's like, do you under, do you get my vibe on that? And, but just to like, show up and just be like, I'm not going to, I'm not even going to look in that direction, but I just like, want to see the sausage of this, you know, decision being made here. I don't know. Does anyone else feel like it's kind of crazy not even be able to be in the room?
Yes. I think it's way.
Yeah, that's.
Crazy. We have the duty to do our homework, and that puts some onus on staff, where that video better be up that very next day, because sometimes that video doesn't come up for a week or two. And, so, you know, I, I think I could buy into it if it were more of given opinions, but if I were a silent, you know, participant, is that really, am I really breaking open meetings if I'm not discussing anything?
This isn't necessarily about you.
Yeah, I know it's not about me, but.
No, I mean, it, it's not about any one of you individually. It's about the collective, and the fact that you can have what they call, have called daisy chain, or walking quorums. And that is the process under which, you know, one of you has an opinion, you express it, you express it to another councilperson, and so, you've got two of you. One of those people expresses it to yet another, you've got a quorum. So, if you have a liaison and one other individual there, if you get a third there, and you're hearing their opinions being expressed, you are potentially hearing the issues that are going to come up before you as council, and you have already jumped ahead in that knowledge of what, you know, any of you, your positions currently are. If somebody, if one of you is expressing it at the meeting, then, and, and let's just say, Ms. Rosen Garden is at the meeting, and you're at the meeting, and you happen to express, she's the liaison, you express an opinion, she's the liaison, she has some discourse as well, and then there's the committee. There's the two of you already. And then, Mr. Johnson jumps in, just because he's sitting in the back, and he. in the back and he's listening, he's already heard both your opinions, both of your positions, and he, whether it consciously is or not, can impact how he's perceiving the issue. But he's already heard the information. Passively, yes. It's not, but, and again, heavy-handed? Probably. But that's the AG. This is from the Attorney General's office. This isn't just me out there in limbo land, you know, of anywhere. This is me telling you what the Attorney General's office has been saying.
Even if it's an open meeting that we're attending, like, it's not done in any secret.
No.
I mean, that was, that is what I thought the whole point of the Open Meetings Act was. But, wow, that is very narrow. That's a very narrow interpretation, I think.
It can be. I mean, yes, you're helped by having the quorum notice on the agendas, indicating that you may be there, you may be listening, there may be a quorum of you all. But all I'm telling you is that there are, there are agey opinions out there. There is a thought out there that that could potentially be a violation, if it is something that comes back to you for ultimate decision, which, as committees, they all do.
This could be a solution, whereas you simply do two agendas. You do the agenda for the committee, and then you do agenda to make it look like it's a council meeting also. If there are three or more council members present, they don't have to talk, they do not have to add any dialogue at, to the committee. But by having two agendas, you, you protect the council members from being present, even if they're not talking. This is kind of like when I asked my science teacher, why does the molecular formula have to be written this way? And he said, because, that's just the way it is. Same thing. TML is saying, because, that's just the way it is. Even if you're in the background and you're not speaking and you're just watching, you're better off watching the video the next day. It sounds like I'm asking my science teacher once again, just because.
Senator Litchfield?
Yeah, this seems, I think heavy-handed is maybe the appropriate word. And there's another, there's several more. I don't, this doesn't make any sense to me. But like, maybe it's from like an engineering literalness, because like, if I'm watching the video the next day versus watching the video one hour later, is that the same as watching the video five minutes delayed, or 200 milliseconds delayed? In which case, we're like down at the, like, this, there's no like clear sense where this makes any sense to me. Will you, so it says here that you will provide us a legal review of these opinions. Can you provide those opinions to us, please? Probably out of band, because I'd love to see like the actual kind of underlying work in this. Not that I don't trust you, but it just seems bonkers that like this is like what's really coming down.
I talked to an attorney with TML. She backs up exactly what she just said. And TML also will quote Attorney General documents, and you can see the law cases regarding First Amendment rights with TML Open Meetings Act.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what I'm requesting.
Yeah. Councilor Johnson?
I, and, I know we live in Texas. I, I'm, I'm kind of curious, like, is this a, and you're, you know, you're on the bar in Texas, and I don't know if you've been in other states, but like, let me just pick, California, New York, Washington State. Is this also, or, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to not be cynical about this position, but it feels like, I don't know. It, it feels like it is punitive, but I don't know why, you know?
I am familiar with the open government laws in some states. It's not unusual to have open government laws in a lot of states. Florida has some very strong ones as well. California. I don't know about New York. I try not to find out about New York, because I just, that, that's just in a whole nother world to me.
I wasn't sure if it was like specific to this Attorney General.
No, no. This goes back to...
Not, not Open Meetings Act, but just the opinion that...
No, no. This, this goes back to even John Cornyn. And I think there was one more that was a predecessor of his. But most definitely, there are, there is a, a, several that are in a row, not just this one, and not just this, not the preceding one, who is Governor Abbott. So, I mean, it is a very narrow reading, and I understand. And, and to your point, Justin, simply because you can, this is one of the things where the sign of the times, it hasn't caught up with the opinions, maybe, where you can actually hear recordings that are right afterwards. But I will say that there, there was certainly have been recordings. I mean, there's been audio tapes for eons. And you could go in and have listened to any of those right after the meeting. And I have some cities that actually that happens quite frequently. And then I have some, I, I have a city that, there is a council person who actually brings a recorder to every meeting she attends, and then she throws it out there to the public. Just kind of, just want to hit my head sometimes. But, you know, I realize that intuitively, that makes no sense. I do believe that the, you know, the protection that you have is the quorum notice. I think Rudy's idea about having, you know, maybe a, a shadow, I, I won't say that in a, in a bad way, but an additional agenda, I'm not saying that in like a shadow government, but just, you know, I mean, if you plan on having, you know, if it's something that is really, really, you know, some, you need the meat, you need the beat on, meat on the bones, you, you want to hear it. Well, then go ahead and let the public know. I would rather you do that, and let the public know that you're all going to be there, or there's a potential that you all are actually going to be there listening in. Now, the notice of quorum gives that notice a bit, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't clearly say that this will be something that will be on an agenda in the future, and we will be making deliberations on kind of thing, but that no deliberations will be made here. So I don't know that, I mean, we might be able to buff up the quorum notice so that it's almost a notice in and of itself, rather than there being like, in essence, three notices out there. There's the committee notice, there's the, there's the council notice, and then there's a quorum notice. But I, I'm just telling you that when the question was posed to me, you know, I went back and I remembered it, and I looked it up. And, and when I was talking with Sylvia even, she was like, oh, yeah, I remember something about that. And there are at least two or three opinions that I know, you know, that I, and Rudy obviously has talked to TML. It, it is what it is, you know, from their standpoint.
So, so I think, following up with giving us kind of a more formal legal, you know, opinion on this, but also if there's some possible solutions that would allow us a little bit more flexibility would be something else, I think that, you know, Council would like to see as well. Councilor Reed?
Yeah. Well, I would think in looking ahead, the budget and finance meetings usually bring a bunch of people in, particularly when we start going through the budget. So we might want to do that shadow agenda or whatever.
Or just call a joint session.
Yeah.
It's gotta be a better...
Yeah, or whatever it is.
I was gonna say for budget, for budget season, that would probably be, just have that extra notice that, hey, the, you know, council, especially if, I mean, our, the budget might be hybrid, probably. I don't know. I mean, definitely it'll be in person, but I'm sure there's going to be a hybrid option. So yeah, we should probably just post that, you know, the full council may be in attendance.
Yes.
You have to, you have to list it as an agenda for council. You can't just put a note on the committee meeting agenda. You have to create a new agenda saying council meeting may, may happen. No voting...
So like a works, like this work session agenda that we just posted. So just...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay. So upcoming budget meetings, I would do that.
All right. So we'll get some further direction from City Attorney. Before opening up to public comments, more council questions. Councilman Johnson?
And, and Barbara, definitely do not look at other states. That's a, that's a gigantic waste of your time. It's just me lashing out there.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think then, we, we need to start looking also at the cities, because I, I think that this is a special city, as we are. I know that the rules, they are for everybody. And when they are talking, then they are rules, this is one standard. So if they say then, they are 10 centimeters, this is one standard, it's 10 centimeters. We cannot change that. Centimeters, that units. Now, in behavior or legally, as Barbara, she mentioned, for us, it's very difficult. The city is very difficult, because we are, the city, that has 40 people, 48, no more than 60 people, is real, real, watching how the city is moving. So for us, it's important, what happened in each of that committees. And we, as they say here, we cannot sit down the next day and, and we listen to what happened last night with this committee, because it's not the same. And we are not watching our citizens. This is the other. Because the citizens, they show a lot when you are watching them. And, and I think then, I, I, I respect the law, and I am with the law. But in this case, it is very, very important to find if it's in reality for all the cities, or if we can request to the district attorney how this city can be working with that. Because it's also, then also, we can request. That doesn't mean, we can have some justification. This is a city, 650 people, is moving by committees, it has the city council, and this is the organization. So sometimes we have these situations, then in that committees, they have three or four members of the city council, because they participate. So, and, and believe me, perhaps the city attorney will say, no. But I don't believe that. I believe that they will say yes. This is how I am thinking.
Councilor Rosenbarden, then Councilor Litchfield?
Just so you know how all this came about in the first place, is a couple of senators were doing backdoor deals. I'll vote for your item if you vote for mine. And when the public heard about that, reporters got wind of this, and they broadcasted. And when the public heard about this, they voted those senators out and put in new senators. The new senators made this law, but excluded themselves from it, but made municipalities have to abide to this law. So here we are, one more time, another rule on municipalities.
Litchfield?
The other thing is that, like, whereas I think we should be able to listen to these meetings, I don't know about y'all, and it might be worth getting your input, but I very much prefer not partici-, like, I would not want us to all show up to a budget and finance meeting and like throw our weight around and be like pushing things, whatever. So like, all of us attending a meeting seems fine to me, but I would very actively discourage, you know, much council participation, because it does kind of push things around. And I think that it is more respectful to our committees to kind of defer to them to have their space.
An open up for the members of the public to speak?
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, I really would echo what Councilmember Litchfield said. It's like, where we have problems are where we have complaints. We have a, as Councilmember Rosenbarden said, this was, this was something dumped, the state, the state still does it. They, they have, they, they do, they do this, and they said, we can't do it. And that's, and TML complains about that on a regular basis if you go there and, and listen to their meetings. So, so there is that. And I think it's going to be complaint-driven where someone makes a complaint about it, if we keep having council members make a lot of comments, because that's when it's going to be obvious that that's what's happening. So if you don't have council members creating a lot of conversation there and, and trying to influence the meeting, you're going to have less problems, because you're going to have less complaint. So I think that's, I think that Councilmember Kamona makes a very good point in that roughly 600 people we have here, and 60 people who are active. And so there's a lot of things she would say, oh, so-and-so's wife and so-and-so i- is, is chairing this committee, and so-and-so's wife is on council, and so, so, all things. But we're going to have that, because it's 60 people running a city and, and being active. And we used to have 80, you know, and I, I liked it when we were 80 or 90. And I, and I look forward to us having that level of participation again. And matter of fact, it's a mission of, a personal mission of mine that we get back up to that level of participation. But it's still going to be 80 or 90 people, you know, and maybe we're up to 800 by then. I don't know. But, but it's always going to be that tight. So I think that I would encourage us to realize that and to work with that. But I also think we, the self-discipline of people not talking during committee meetings who are on council will help ease that transition. I know that when I was on council and I wanted to go and people were continuing to talk, I felt like I shouldn't even be there, because it was going to be a violation of open meetings. And I guess I would like a legal opinion also to follow this up later, is because in a previous iteration, you would have staff and mayor carrying quorum. And I think that that's another issue, where, where, where that was involved. And so it shouldn't be daisy chaining through staff, it shouldn't be daisy cha-, chaining through a mayor as to what other people are going to vote. And, and I've seen that. And so I have concerns about all those ramifications, because, you know, there, there was pressure sometimes, well, you should do it, because everybody else is doing it. And it's like, I shouldn't have that information, you know? That shouldn't be, I, I shouldn't be pressured as a, as a person, and I shouldn't have the information of how other people are going to be voting. So I think those are all very important considerations about our open meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just add on a personal note, this is maybe more on the, the humor side. I prefer if you guys stopped attending so many meetings, because it makes me feel bad and guilty that I don't have time for that. Like, I don't see how you guys have time for attending the extra meetings that you do beyond what you're, you're obligated to. But that's just, just me, I guess. So that being said, this is something that I, if Barbara, if you can provide more details in, in terms of the AG opinions, and some guidance as far as what flexibility we might have as a city for meeting, I think, at the balance of what we're looking for here. And there may be some, maybe it's a special circumstances case where the recommendation is to, you know, do this for one time. If there's some language that we can change on our quorum notice, or if, you know, if there's some clear guidance that says, based on this, you know, the recommendation is only the liaison and no more than one council, if that, right? Or maybe it's just the liaison attending. So I think we're, we can bring this back with more details for, for Council to follow up and deliberate on. Councilors, any further discussion on this item? Yeah, thank you very much for, for giving us the background on that. All right, Council, we've run out of agenda items, and we're not allowed to add anymore. It's seven, within 72 hours, so my, my apologies. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mayor Potem, in second with Councilmember Litchfield, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned at 7:48 PM. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much, Council.